Call this meeting to order. Let's get started. Russell, if you can, please call the roll, please.
Thank you, sir. Mayor? Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Albritt?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
Thank you. If you can join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, welcome. Welcome to the Town Council meeting, Southwest Ranches. Appreciate everybody being here and taking time out of your evening. It's great to see a bigger crowd arriving. I think we're slowly getting back to normal again, and so that's great to see. All right. We have a couple of guests with us this evening and wanted to welcome Mayor Ross and Commissioner Beemfer. Thank you for being here this evening. They're going to give us a presentation with the new proposal for handling solid waste. Why don't you, if you could just please come up?
Good evening.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioner. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm the Chair of the Solid Waste Working Group. Vice Chair, Commissioner Beemfer will give you a presentation tonight, and he promises it will be shorter than others. But understand you have plenty of time for questions. So if you'd like, just wait till the end, write your questions down, and he will give you the presentation and will be able to answer everything. So Vice Mayor Beemfer.
Good evening, everyone. Would you mind if I, I'm vaccinated, will you be okay?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Far enough away from me. I know we've put in new mandates today, so I'll be careful. It's great to be here. That's the first time I've had a chance to be at your hall. Last time I was at the hall was, it was a trailer. So that goes back a little ways. So it's great to see you. And I love all the screens and everything. It's great. Tonight, I'm going to give you a quick overview on what has been happening. Mayor Ross and myself have been visiting all the city commissioners and kind of giving an overview of what a number of cities are thinking about doing together, pulling together to create a solid waste comprehensive entity. And so I'm going to give you a quick overview, a little timeline of where we were. I was on the RRB, the Resource Recovery Board, when I was a Hollywood City Commissioner, back in the 2000s. And as you all know, and you all were a part of it, I believe, part of the Resource Recovery Board, as you know, that was an entity that went on for almost 20, 30 years. And what should have been a celebration in 2013, when all the bonds were being paid off, didn't turn out to be a celebration. There should have been champagne, corks popping and everything, but instead it became, the RRB expired. And cities, many cities went their own way and frankly thought that they might be able to find better deals. There were deals to be found, but over the course of time, we've kind of seen that not everything has panned out the way I guess everybody had hoped it might be. So if you look at the timeline, and you all have one in front of you as well, so, okay, making sure. The, like I said, in 2013, the RRB expired. Cities went their own, well, many cities went their own way. 2014, you saw the capacity that was being used at the, going to the incinerator, the amount of trash that was going there would drop dramatically because those cities that weren't still part of that agreement, that trash was going to landfills all over the state. It was going to Okeechobee and Arcadia and Palm Beach and wherever. It was going all over. So what happened, in the meantime, when the RRB expired, all the cities wanted to distribute the assets. They did. There was litigation. All those things were distributed to all the cities. You all got your share, with the exception of one thing. And when I saw this thing come up that was about to be distributed, I asked the County Commissioner, let's ask the cities if we can put a hold on this. And that happened to be, the piece of land was 20-something acres called the Alpha 250, owned by all those cities that had been part of the RRB. Why did we, why did I think that that was important? Because it's very hard to zone and find land use for trash in a county that is built out like this county. You all can imagine how hard that is. So we passed a resolution asking the cities to put a pause on that. Cities agreed, and in the meantime, what we did is we hired a consultant to answer that question. Should we hold on to that piece of property? And if so, we asked them to do, look at a couple other things. If we're going to do that, how can we get to a 75% recycling rate? And if we're going to do that, what governance structure would make sense to do that? Why did we need a 75% recycling rate? You'll see one of the next, the next things that talks about, the North Incinerator closed in 2015. That's going to be important in just a minute, but you can imagine, when you had all the cities sending all their trash to those two incinerators, and one of them closes, now where's all that trash going? The only way to manage with one incinerator is to recycle almost everything else. That's the point of that. So we asked Arcadis to do a study. The cities were responsible, and they picked who the consultant was, what the scope and sequence was, the whole bit. Arcadis came back, that was a consultant. They came back with their recommendations. First and foremost, they said, hold on to that piece of property with everything you got, because you're going to need it. Second, they said, they showed us scenarios of three scenarios of how we could, as a county, collectively get to a 75% recycling rate. Third, they recommended an independent district that would be a governing structure that would be independent of both the cities and the county. It would be a separate entity, separate taxing district, and it would be on its own. So we went from there. Can we go to the next slide, please? Thank you. We went from there, and we established a, the Solid Waste Working Group. We invited all the cities. All the cities appointed a delegate, and we took from the larger cities, the medium cities, small cities, and myself from the county. And then we also pulled a TAC group from all the utilities, all the public works directors, et cetera. And we examined all the possibilities, all the different best practices that have, that were in the state. What kind of, you know, how were they dealing with, how were they dealing with garbage in their own county? And what kind of governing structures were they using? And what can we glean from them? What can we learn from that? So they came back. We learned where there was dependent districts and independent districts, and who was trying to do it in our local agreement. Next slide. So, just let me pause that, I want you to pause that thought for one second, because I want you to focus on this, because this is what is right in front of our face right now. There's a couple of things going on. This is a renewal, and let me back up for one second. The county's responsibility, or statutory responsibility, is to make sure that there's a disposal place for all your garbage to go to. Your job as a, as a city commission is to make sure that there's a hauler that picks up the trash for all your citizens. Our job is to figure out where that trash goes. I know as a city commissioner, I had no idea where that stuff, and I didn't, I didn't really care. I just, as long as it got picked up and no, I wasn't getting any calls, that was fine. But as a county commissioner, I have, now I'm, I have, my job is to know that there's a place for that to go, and it's going to be dealt with. So in January of 22nd of this next year, six months from now, we have to, say, we have to go for a renewal of our disposal agreement with Wheelbrader and with Waste Management. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Waste Pro is taking your garbage to Monarch and to the Medley Lanto. Could be wrong, but that's what I think is going on. So we are, and our agreement is with Waste Management and Wheelbrader. Six months from now, we have to renew that agreement. But to renew that agreement, a couple of things have to be in place. If you could do it twice, one more time. These are the preconditions. The preconditions require that we have half a million tons of garbage pledged to Wheelbrader and Waste Management. That means we have to have enough cities on board that comprise that amount of garbage to do that. That's what makes them economically feasible. Before, our numbers were much higher, because we had two incinerators and they needed more. Now it's only one incinerator. But we are trying to bring all the cities on board. Why? Because the more, the more that we have of pledged garbage to this, we have, we can probably do better in the negotiations. We can probably get better terms for all the citizens of Broward County. And there's a lot of things in play. Not only are we looking at, you know, those agreements, but there's lots of things that Waste Management's asking regarding their landfill. There's things we might be asking with regards to extra burners, or the need for another waste-to-energy plant, all kinds of things. That's going to be all part of the negotiations. And the more that we are, the more that we are united on this, the better. So I want you to remember, just keep in the back of your mind, this is facing us in six months, and it is having some play in our minds with what the next part of what we're doing. Next slide. Why are we doing this? The need, here's, these are some numbers that are a little staggering. When the RRB expired, and this is in 2013, you'll notice that we had about 3 million tons of garbage in this county. You'll notice that the amount that was recycled was around, I think it was 40%, with the, actually adjusted, it was actually up by 60%, because with the waste-to-energy plants, you actually get bonus. So we are, we had one of the highest recycling rates in the state, and honestly, in the country. We were doing really good. We had, that was a good, that was a good system. We also had a landfill rate that was very low. That was the entire idea of why we were doing the incinerators, so it wasn't all going to the landfill. That was the whole point, that was the whole idea. Fast forward to 2019, here's what happened. It didn't take long, and now we've got 4 million tons of garbage, and only one incinerator. And you'll notice our recycling rates have plummeted. They have just, they are falling like a rock, as city after city are finding that the rates have gone too high for them to be doing recycling. At the same time, what you'll see is landfill rates have skyrocketed. Those are numbers that any responsible stewardship of comprehensive waste would be going, these are going in the wrong direction. This is not what we want to see happen in this county. So, okay, so what do we do about this? Next slide, please. We have to figure out, and this goes back to the Arcadis consulting. We had asked them, okay, how do we, how do we get out of this? What do we do? What they did was, they gave us three scenarios, and I know these are a lot of, I'm not going to go into this in detail, because it would take forever. But I will tell you, there were three constants in each one of these scenarios. It said, if you're going to get to a 75% recycling rate, here's what you're going to need. You're going to need at least three materials recycling facilities. You're going to need five bulky waste, yard trash, C and D, construction and debris facilities, and you're going to need one yard trash facility. That's what it's going to take to get to that number, to really do it right. So those are the three constants. The next part of the three scenarios is what else will be needed, and each one has a different wrinkle in it. Scenario A adds a mixed waste processing facility and an organics processing. The scenario B adds a mixed waste and a, and that's all it adds. And scenario C is more bare bones. So keep all those in mind. All of those scenarios have those three, those three constants. Next slide, please. But all of them, no matter which one you pick, has this, and these are the costs. All of them have a lot of zeros. I don't care which way you look at it. And if you're an elected official like myself, these numbers are worrisome, because you know, this is, this is something that becomes a hard thing to ask of our citizens. But we all have garbage, and we all have to take care of it somehow. And we want to take care of it in this county. So you can see the difference in the, in the numbers in 2025, 2040, 2060, but what you're seeing is the cost, and this is with those constants. Scenario A is if you, when it says assuming a fourth WTE, what that's talking about is adding another burner to the incinerator that is in, the one over in Davie and Holly, in Dave. Because right now, it can take 800,000 tons, that brings it up to a little over a million. Or adding an entire, another waste-to-energy plant, which would be just north of about a billion dollars. A lot of money. It is a shame, every time I see that, I, I'm thinking of the one that we had, that we, that was dismantled, at the same time that Palm Beach was building one. And, you know, it's a shame that we're here, having to be here at this place, but this is where we are. So those are the scenarios, those are the costs. Next slide, please. How are we going to get there? We, we asked Arcadis what governing structure could help us get there that would bring, that would have all the cities combined together, that would help make those decisions and make those assessments, along with the county. And I say along with the county, because I really want to emphasize, this is primarily city-driven, that I think the, you know, because cities saw their rates going up. The county has less than 1% of the garbage. Most of this county is incorporated. So from my perspective, from the county, this is, you know, this is really trying to help cities out and keep the costs down, make sure that you have, that you are in control of your own destiny. That's really what it comes down to. Having control of your own destiny and your own prices, and being, being able to provide a service to your constituents. So we looked at, this is the main, I don't think I'll go into the other ones, only because I think they're probably off the table, because of time, but this is the agreement that we're probably going to be going with. Well, I, let me back up, because as I said before, there was a recommendation to go to the independent district.
Statute.
Statute.
Right.
And the Solid Waste Working Group also voted to go with that independent district. And then I brought this same presentation to my colleagues on the County Commission. As many of you know, there are two former senators there and a former representative. And when they saw, can, I might ask you to go forward on this, to the independent? One more. Thank you. I'll go back and tell this. This was a criteria that was the independent, and it, and there were some good parts to it and not, but it did not, it doesn't meet the timeline that we need. And the main thing was, like, remember, trying to get all this done in six months? We don't know that if this would ever get done, because we've asked our legislators, and we've asked legislators throughout the state, they don't want to do another special taxing district. They really want nothing to do with it. And that's, and this has to go, has to go through Tallahassee. It also takes away local control, because this, and I've seen my fellow elected officials, my city officials, they have a real vision there of ways that they see this, this being able to happen. This takes that away from them. It would take it away from you all, if you all were a part of it. And I don't think they want to see that, and I will say, my fellow commissioners said, you don't want to do this. You don't want to lose that vision, you don't want to concede control, and you want to keep this in-house. And they said, if trust is an issue, if that's why Arcadis had recommended going to an independent, then that's on us as a county commissioner. And we need to step up and make sure that, you know, if there's, if there's trust issues, we need to find out what those are, make the contracts so everybody feels good about it. So after we had voted for this, the Solid Waste Working Group reconvened, thought about it long and hard, and said, you know what, let's take, let's take this one off the table. And we did. So now, could you go back to, please? Yeah. Back, and so we've kind of been looking at both the interlocal and the dependent. I'm not going to go to the dependent, because that kind of is being taken off the table after our last meeting, because there is an issue of dual office holding. We wanted, it is, Palm Beach does it great. They do a great job of taking care of their trash. But in that case, it's the county commissioners that simply take off one hat and put on another hat, they are then the solid waste authority. I think, they're not as incorporated as we are. We have a lot, we, I mean, we're, we are primarily incorporated, so it's not the same thing. And I think the cities, a dependent district has a little bit more, the county has more thumb on the scale. The county has to approve either the budget, the membership, the composition, and I think for most, for the most, tell me if I'm wrong, Mayor Ross, but I think most of the cities felt, you know what, we really kind of want to do this on our own. So we said, all right, let's take a good look, a hard look at this. And this is kind of where we're probably falling, falling. Why are we looking at this? In our local agreement, we can do this timeline quickly. This is something that we can write the contracts, pull it together. Right now, we have legal counsel from the county, the cities, everybody working together, writing things together. I think we can come up with a contract and do it before those, before January, do those contracts. This has, this would make sure that we have all local control. This is cities, county working together, saying how we want to do this, what kind of recycling facilities, how do we phase it in, how much do we assess, all those kinds of things. Now, the drawback on this is not every city has to be involved, and that's the one part that concerns us. With the independent district, and I think that's why people liked it, every city had to be a part of it. This one is a choice. But one of the things that, when we went to the Lauderdale City Commission, it was Haitian American Day, and they were talking about different idioms, you know, sayings and things like that. The first one they talked about was, many hands lighten the load. And we're going, me and Mayor Ross both looked at each other and said, absolutely. Because the fact is, if we are all part of this, then the assessments are distributed a little more evenly, and they're lower for everybody, every constituent in this county. So we can't, an interlocal agreement cannot do ad valorem taxes, but they can do a special assessment as an entity. So that is what they would be doing. So that's, that's kind of where we're probably falling. And I don't think I'm giving too much away on that, but, you know, prior to this, I've been kind of showing it's been more, more possibilities, but you're the first one where we've met since that, so I'm just kind of giving you guys a lay of the land. Next one, please? And I know you guys want to get out of here quick. Two more, please, I'm sorry. One more. Okay, next to us. So while all this is going on, there's some steps that have to be taken. And the reason I'm here today, we're here today, is we need to simultaneously be doing a waste generation study throughout this entire county. Where does all the garbage come, come from? Who's, how much is everybody gen, everybody generating? How much are single-family households generating, mobile home parks generating, trailer parks, Home Depot, big box, little box, mom and pop? How much does everybody generate? And what are they generating? We need to know those answers. So we are, are, have asked for, not RFP, but we've asked for proposals from companies to do this study. It will probably take about a year. It will be, at the very most, about a half million dollars. One of the, one of the first things the county said, to help on this trust issue, we will pay half of it. And what we are asking is for every city, based on their population, to take care of the other half. So at the very most, we're asking for, for this. Figure out, at the most, again, a quarter of a million dollars, figure out your population and what that would be based on. We're asking you to put a placeholder in, in your budget to consider that. You all have already been part of the MOU, that has been looking at exploring all of this and being a part of it. We, we hope you will continue to do that. I don't think it's a whole lot, but it gets us to the next step, because this will be taking place while we are pulling together, not only who is going to be part of that negotiating team, while we're doing the renewals, and, you know, then we're on our way. So I think that's the last one, I believe. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is an example of what Palm Beach, they just did their waste generation study, and I want you to see how theirs turned out. They've been doing this for 10 or 20 years. What you see there is the, and the single family is the best example there. What you would be asking of your residents is 170, in this case, from Palm Beach, they ask of their residents $173 a year. This takes into consideration all of the tipping fees. Your, your, your agreement right now with Waste Pro, the tipping fees are included in that arrangement. So what should happen is those costs from your city should go down, while this, from this entity, would go up. I'm not going to kid you, it is not a zero-sum game. There's going to be more that's going to be asked, citizens, for, to, so that we have a long-term way to deal with garbage in this county. This is the one way to do it. And so that's kind of, that's kind of what it looks like in the future. I'm happy to take any questions with Mayor Ross.
And I think one of the first questions you might have is, why did you dismantle that incinerator? I'm glad you asked that question. Because we did, and I need you to understand that the difference of what we're talking about is-
Mayor Ross, can I ask you to-
Sure. The difference of what we're talking about is that the RRB did not own that incinerator. Waste Management did. What we're proposing here is that we own or lease everything. We are in it together. It's one Broward, period. So it benefits each and every one of us. County came forward and said, trust issue, let me show you, you know, this is what we're going to do. And now we're faced with a situation of asking, again, nothing more than a pledge of your garbage. So that's the easy part. What Commissioner Ferro was saying was, there are a lot of zeros on it. And at the end, while, because we're all in it together, prices will go down, what we're looking at is not just to solve the problem today or tomorrow. This is a 50 to 100-year legacy. This is, in the future, visionary thinking of, we recognize, population is going up, garbage is going up, landfills are finite. We need to do something. We all want to do the right thing, recycling, helping the environment, and candidly, it's cost-effective to do that, because you get something back from your garbage. So what we're looking at is, yes, spending a little more money in creating maybe a new facility, maybe just another incinerator, but when you look at it over the years, I've got to be honest with you, we're all in it, it's going to work out for everyone. It benefits everyone. Why is the county doing it? Because statutorily, they're obligated merely to provide a disposal place for us, but it's the cities who create most of the garbage. So we'd like to be involved in it. County says, all the more power to you, we want to be there, we want to be helpful. And so that's why we're here, that's why we're doing it. Now, if you have any questions.
You had mentioned that, and thank you for coming out and giving us the presentation tonight, by the way. You had mentioned that going forward, the county is either going to lease or own the property, the asset, I'm assuming. Does that mean you're going to be buying Waste Management and the Wheelbrader plant, or is this any net new assets?
I think, I think what you're saying, if there's new facilities that are created, correct?
Right.
Because it would, because the cities, those cities that are part of this, they would be all part in, they would own it.
Right.
They would collectively own it. If they're building new facilities, they are building it together, and they would own it together. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought you were going to require the other facilities as part of this, to be a better involvement.
We, they're, you know, we, we're going to need all hands on deck.
Right, we'll need-
The fact is, we're going to need to recycle everything we can, but if we can't recycle it, then we're going to have to send the, what we can't recycle it to Wheelbrader, what they can't burn, they're going to have to send to Waste Management. We need all those players involved. So we're not, we're not saying we're taking over what they're doing. They are going, we're going to need their partnership as well, in different ways.
I see.
But it's going to be, it'll be on different, different terms.
I have a couple, if you could.
Yeah, just, you know, with, with what's going on with recycle today, and how it's, you know, for a time there, it was a booming business, and it's kind of going the other way. What is your thought as far as what is going to be able to be recycled versus not recycled?
I think you're seeing, and I just got a, I just got something in the mail, an email yesterday. Even Waste Management just hired someone, someone on resilience, because they actually are starting to see an update on this. You're going to see with this infrastructure bill that just got passed, they're going to be needing all kinds of metals. Things like aggregate, like right, unfortunately, right now, our glass is going into the landfill. That, that can be used as road aggregate. Suddenly, that has value to it. Plastics, all those kinds of things, they're seeing it being able to be used. City after city is using it- City after city is using it for their decking, for their playgrounds, but they're, they're recognizing, there's, there's a real uptick on the use of those things. The question is, how do we close the loop here in Broward? And I say that because we're, we are the epicenter for sea level loss. What we do, and, and, and unfortunately, landfills and things like that, they do a lot of emissions that are not helpful. We need to provide a really good model that says, you know what? We're serious about it. We're going to have, we're going to try to take control of our own destiny here. And to, to close that loop, what we're going to be asking is inventors, entrepreneurs, to come here and figure out the best way to use those resources. And hopefully, that's actually going to increase our own manufacturing in this county. That's what our hope is. That, that, and, and from ci- from the city's point of view, ask yourself, what kind of things do we need? Well, you know, we, we all are buying from various purchasers or places of things that we use in our, for our citizens. What can we, what, how can we build that ourselves? How can we manufacture tha- that ourselves, out of those materials? Those are the kind of things I think, at least I, when I'm hearing some of the visionaries that are from the city, I'm hearing that. And I think that's the right direction to go.
Example, recycled seawalls.
Yeah.
Think about that. I know that's important to you out here in South West Ranch.
You got, you got, you got the airplane out. Yeah.
These are different things that we're trying to work on.
Yeah, George is doing that right now. Recycled seawalls out of plastic, for cities like Hollywood, Pompano, Fort Lauderdale. They're, they, they heard that, and they're going, oh, here's an idea.
Right.
So, you know, there's, there's all kind of possibilities.
There really are. Concrete sidewalks, not made out of concrete. Glass. Just, no sidewalks here, I get it. I get it. Have to know my audience better.
Yeah, no, my questions were primarily about recycling as well. I mean, we had somebody last night at one of our HRO meetings recommend we get rid of recycling. And I, I follow this stuff, and I know the Chinese changed their laws, that they can't import any of that. Pretty much put the market in the deck. So then what? Okay, I like the idea of using it, you know, locally for various things. I mean, if you partner with a university like FIU, you might get some wonderful ideas out of that.
And, and you, you really are seeing, I'm following wa- what's called waste dive, and it's all the industry. And you're seeing a lot of talk about how it's coming back up. But we're going to have to do, do it a lot better. We had contamination levels that were forty percent more. St. Lucie County, who's, who is taking this on, they have, they are doing PSAs and education. They've got their, their contamination lower than ten percent now. Because they're doing fantastic educational with their kids, with their high schools, all that kind of stuff. They're bailing it like crazy. With glass, un- unlike what we're doing, we're not recycling it at all, unfortunately. They can't sell it fast enough, because people are using it for sandblasting, for aggregate, for all kinds of stuff. So there's ways to do it.
So there's a domestic market built?
Yep, yep.
Right, it's going up.
Yep.
Good.
All right.
If, if I may-
Yeah, go ahead.
From a fiscal conservative point of view, our, our council up here more or less are staunchly fiscal conservative. Uh, you're coming forward with us with, you know, it's going to cost us, everybody in this town, here, a little additional revenue. Now, our residents are looking at increases because of property values, or taxes, or tax control because of that. Looking at a higher fee increase because of our contractual obligations. Now we're asking, now we're hearing about the waste disposal that is going to cause an increase. I'm going to ask, is there something that the county can do to give back? Because, you know, we can only push these folks so hard, and they're not going to be happy with every one of us sitting up here. And that's all I ask.
I, I promise you, we will be looking at it every way possible. I, I, you know, I think I speak for my colleagues. We're going to try to make this, um, as painless as possible, it's not going to be painless, but it's going to be, we'll do our best on it. And where the, you know, the county has assets, and, and where, where those assets can come into play, I think it's incumbent upon the county to, to having them in play as inexpensively as possible. So that's, that's, I think that's the, where the county needs to be part-
Yeah, in, in my mind, you need to set goals for the overall program to match where rates are today, or something like that. Because if we turn around and say, we're investing in the future, your garbage is going, because we have, we have high garbage rates because of the amount of bulk. We pick up large quantities of bulk every two weeks. And if we turned around and said to our residents, true, garbage is going up five hundred percent, maybe talk to a new group next time.
Yeah.
Yeah?
What is, what is your, what is your citizen's garbage fee per month?
I have to ask Andy, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Marty.
Marty, sure.
Marty, there you go. Marty, what's our garbage rate per month?
Paying, paying.
Hi, good evening. Let me give, give me a chance to look at the table, because it's based on parcel lot size with-
Oh, real? For bulk?
By the bulk, portion. Uh, we have six grand.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'll give you a range. Uh, give you a range.
While he's looking that up, let me just remind everyone, sometimes, sometimes, it's not always about price. It's about the environment. And we are spending a little more to save the environment. And in the long run, your children and grandchildren will say thank you.
And I, there is a real social cost to not, to, to doing this, to doing this right, to doing, or to doing it wrong. Um, and, you know, when we, when we're looking at our water tables and all those kind of things, and possibly polluting those kind of things, that's why we got to do this right. Not to mention the emissions and all that.
The, the lowest trench, which is about an acre, is five ninety-three oh one, five hundred ninety-three dollars and one cent. And the highest, which is about three acres, a little under three acres, is eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and seventy-four cents.
And what's, uh, what's the sanitary waste picker cost? You're talking bulk.
Well, our disposal, our disposal rate, which is fixed on the residential component, is forty-four dollars. Uh, and our, I do have some numbers. I anticipated you'd be asking. Our annual disposal on a residential cost per unit is two hundred and one dollars and seventy-two cents, uh, right now.
All right, that's interesting. Yes?
I have one quick question, if I, if I could. These facilities that need to be built, where are they going to be built? Where's the land?
That's, that is a good question. Obviously, the Alpha Two Fifty is one of those pieces of land.
And where is that located?
That's in Pompano. Um, it, it, that's the one that the cities, you all own part of it, as, as, as one of the members of the RRB.
Right.
And I think those are, those are, those kind of places that are already zoned, and there are a number of them in the county. That's one of them, though, that all the cities own together. So that's, that's the logical place to start.
So you wouldn't need to come into a specific place like Southwest Ranches and look for ten acres here that-
Try not to.
Okay.
But if you're offering land, it's not. You've got land just to the south of us.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the big is right here.
South Sherton.
Yeah. So that's where, somewhere that, you know, we're, from the county's perspective, we try to hold on to that, because that's needed for emergencies. When there's a hurricane, you're seeing all the lumber and everything over there. So we're trying to hold that in, in abey. But, you know, it, it could come into play.
All right. Thank you so much for coming by, taking your time, and educating us, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Have one in the race to pay for public, huh? Or else.
Okay, let's move on to item number four, quasi judicial item.
Thank you, Mayor. Please be advised that the following items, number four and five, on the council agenda are quasi judicial nature. All witnesses who will testify on any of the items in this portion of the agenda will be sworn. Participants who are members of the general public may not be sworn and will not be subject to cross-examination if they are not sworn. However, the council shall not assign unsworn testimony the same weight or credibility as sworn testimony in its deliberations. The applicant has the burden of proof. After the applicant's concluding remarks, the hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony, material, or argument will be allowed unless the council chooses to request additional testimony. The members of the town council will then deliver. All evidence relied upon by reasonably prudent persons in the conduct of their affairs may be considered in these proceedings, regardless of whether such evidence would be admissible in a court. Hearse evidence may supplement or explain other evidence, but shall not alone support a conclusion unless it would be admissible over objection in court. The material in the town council agenda will be considered as evidence without authentication. Anyone representing an organization must present written evidence of his or her authority to speak on behalf of the organization in regard to the matter under consideration. Each person who appears during a public hearing shall identify himself or herself and give their address. And if appearing on behalf of an organization, state the name and mailing address of the organization. The council may, on its own motion, or at the request of any persons, continue the hearing to a fixed date, time, and place. No notice shall be required if a hearing is continued to a fixed date, time, and place. Any applicant shall have the right to request and be granted one continuance. However, all subsequent continuances shall be granted at the discretion of the council and only upon good cause shown. The first matter that will be up is Lake House waiver apply?
At this time, if there's anyone that is willing to give any testimony, and ask that you stand and raise your right hand. You'd have to be, do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Mayor, would you like me to read the item?
Yes, please.
This is a resolution and final order of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving waiver of plat application number WP dash twenty-nine dash twenty-one. Subdivided nine point nine seven acres of property into two lots of seven point four seven and two point five zero acres, generally located on the south side of Sterling Road, one quarter mile west of Mather Boulevard. Legally described as tract eleven, less than north fifty-five feet, and a portion of tract twelve in the northwest blue quarter of section six, township fifty-one south, range forty east, according to the Flat of Chambers Land Company subdivision, as reported in platform one, page five of the public records of Broward County, Florida, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing an effective date.
And also, I just put on the record that this, um, this matter in this hearing was properly noticed in accordance with all state statutes. And with that being said, Jeff, your numbers have on, around, you know?
Good evening. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'd like to just enter this staff report into the record and just quickly summarize it. Uh, this is a nine point nine seven acre parcel, a long, deep parcel with a lot of water. Uh, because of the amount of water, um, the petitioner decided to apply the gross acreage lot standard, because they have the choice of two and a half gross or two net. Uh, since a shared water body doesn't count towards net, uh, they went with the gross formula. And so it's a two and a half acre gross parcel that, that, that is approximately, uh, half, uh, just under half water. There's a little canal, stub of a canal on the, the south property line, and then there's, of course, the lake. Um, it does meet, uh, the minimum requirements for rural ranches. Um, they can, there is room for, uh, we've been talking about the concept of an agricultural reserve, an area for a two-stall barn and a paddock, uh, where the, the equivalent. And, um, as I say in the staff report, um, there is room for that on the property. Um, because of the amount of water, it is certainly possible that they develop the property in a way that precludes that. Uh, but they have identified two areas, uh, that are suitable. And, uh, if, uh, if it's the council's will, they, they do have an exhibit they'll provide, uh, and they will restrict that area from being developed for, for any other use. And that would be on the, the far side of the lake, uh, from where the house would be. Uh, that would be the southwest corner of the property. Um, the, the remainder of the property is, uh, is just short of seven and a half acres. And, uh, there'll be an ingress egress easement going south from Sterling Road that would provide access to the property that they're, uh, here to create tonight, on the very southern end. And, uh, would serve, um, any additional lots that would be created by subdividing in between, uh, the existing houses, towards Sterling and the land in between, and it is possible for further subdivision to take place. Um, uh, creating the lot isn't going to, uh, be an issue for, uh, creating any nonconformities on the property outside of it, and it's undeveloped in and of itself. Um, it's, uh, we don't need any additional right-of-way, uh, for Sterling Road. We've got letters of objections from, uh, all applicable, uh, utilities. And, uh, with that, um, uh, we recommend approval subject to, uh, town attorney's approval of an agreement granting ingress and egress rights to the south parcel, uh, providing for maintenance and improvements within the easement. We have a draft of that, and we're, we're just working, uh, working on the techni- technical details of it. And of course, uh, uh, if council wishes, uh, the agricultural reserve area can also be made, uh, a condition of approval.
Are there any questions from the council?
We do have some comments to, uh, regarding this. Um, is there any more presentations that would come forward?
Well, is the applicant present?
Should I make my comments now or later?
Well, I mean, if you have any direct comments or questions for staff, you can ask those now. And then after that, we'll allow the applicant to-
No, I don't have any questions for staff.
I do, uh, I do, if you would. Jeff, uh, I have a question, if you would please. Uh, could you explain to the audience and, and myself the difference between two and a half acres gross and two and a half acres net, or whatever? Could you explain the, the gross and the net?
Sure. Uh, in the rural ranches, any, any property in the town that's owned or designated rural ranches, um, has a, it's a dual standard. And so, um, the town has defined, um, a gross acre as including, uh, right, rights-of-way, any property that's not only owned, privately owned, uh, by an individual or entity, but also going to the centerline of an adjacent roadway, the centerline of a canal right-of-way in some cases. And that's the way, uh, Broward County did it, and it was established, and the town has adopted that, uh, maintained that, uh, for twenty-one years. The other standard, the one we see mostly, is the net acre standard, uh, where, because not everybody can meet a two and a half acre. In other words, um, if you're a corner property and you have rights-of-way, and maybe an arterial, like a major right-of-way, like Griffin Road or something like that on one side, and you can go to the centerline of that, um, it, it, especially if you're on a corner, um, that gross standard may be the only one you can satisfy. You may not have enough land under private ownership, exclusive of, um, water bodies, shared water bodies, um, and right-of-way to, to meet two full acres. And so, um, they've always had that opportunity to be a legal lot if they had two and a half gross acres, including, uh, half the right-of-way, a budding right-of-way. The net standard is privately owned property, uh, exclusive of any right-of-way, ingress egress easement, uh, and shared water bodies. So canals that, that run through many properties of lake, like this one, uh, where the property line runs through the lake, um, uh, the water doesn't count, uh, towards their net lot area. So in this case, um, they chose to meet the gross standard instead of the net standard.
The, um, the introduction here says that a small portion of the lake could be filled in to create additional space for the agricultural or the barn use. Filling in the lake, and I, I noticed that there was also a canal close by, is that part of the drainage? Is that part of Broward drainage by any chance, the lake or the canal?
Uh, well, the lake is, is, no. It is privately owned. The canal, I, I don't know, uh, whose canal that is. I'm sure, I'm assuming it's South Broward Canal. Um, or, or in this case, uh, yeah, that would be South Broward Canal. Um, the lake is privately owned. Um, it is designated, uh, by the South Broward Drainage District as a surface water management area, um, because it's there, and they're going to use that for their drainage. Uh, but the, that portion of the staff report was merely stating that even though there's water there, and, um, the south, southwest corner of the property is hemmed in a little bit, if somebody wanted to, uh, to expand the area for a barn, they're not landlocked out, they're not, they have the, the room within the parcel, but they would have to fill it, or they have the opportunity to fill it. The applicant, however, has demonstrated that a barn and a paddock can be located there without any, without filling any part of the lake.
And I noticed also, and, and, and this will be my last, I noticed that the two and a half acres is- a half acres is, uh, a hundred and almost nine thousand square foot, and you say that forty-five percent of this property, uh, is taken up by the lake and the canal. That leaves them with about sixty thousand square foot from a hundred and nine thousand square foot. That's a substantial give-up on a piece of property. Uh, is that viable to, to give up that much? I mean, is it, I guess that's the owner's decision to buy it?
Yeah, and that was my estimation. The engineer and, and petitioner's here, and he can give you more exact number. Uh, but, uh, um, there is, there is developable property here, and, uh, they, they have a contract purchaser, uh, is my understanding. And, uh, it, that, that's their, that's up to them, uh, but it does meet our standards. And, and like I said, uh, it, even though the, the ag reserve isn't the code provision, it's something you can look for, uh, during the subdivision process. We've talked about it, and that's one of our criteria. And, you know, they can meet that, and they can reserve an area for that if, uh, if that's the desire of the council.
Thank you.
Jeff, I've got a question, and actually I'd like you to make a point about the agricultural preserve area. Folks, it's one of our highest priorities to protect our rural lifestyle and preserve our open spaces. And one of the tools that we've come up with to try to, uh, preserve this is, uh, the agricultural reserve area. Jeff, if you would, since everybody's going to continue hearing this more and more, and we'll be discussing more and more, maybe you can provide, uh, some definitions?
Sure. Uh, so the, the comp plan, the comp forensic planning board, and, uh, and actually it was the mayor's initiative to begin with, uh, and the council has embraced this concept, uh, and sent it to the comp labor board for further discussion. And the idea is that, uh, every parcel, um, um, that is, potentially, at least, uh, that in the case of a subdivision, when you're creating new lots, um, they have to be capable of supporting, um, a basic, um, requirement, uh, to, to provide a two-stall barn and, and some paddock area. And the exact size of that is, uh, under debate, but the concept is that it ha- what, it's, it's not requ- requiring that somebody set aside half an acre or something like that, but, um, uh, the, uh, the council, uh, and all of us have witnessed, uh, the town being developed in such a way that, uh, even some very large lots, even some two-acre lots are being developed in such a way that, that a future owner couldn't build a barn if they wanted to. Um, you know, the houses, uh, sprawl, they have guest homes, uh, large pools, tennis courts, you know, you name it. There could be a lake on the property such as this one, and all of a sudden, there's, there's no place to put a barn, uh, should a future owner want one. And the whole idea is to provide, uh, the, uh, if, if the current developer of a property or occupant of a property isn't interested in having, uh, any agricultural area, whether it be a barn, uh, or, you know, some, some crops that they grow or some other agricultural use, that they don't foreclose the opportunity for a future owner to do exactly that. And so the idea is that we're looking for that when, uh, when folks are subdividing. We want to make sure that they're not foreclosing the opportunity of a future owner to have, um, this area for some agricultural use. And we've been using the horse in the barn as the standard, um, and, again, it's, it's still a topic of discussion as to how large of an area and all that type of thing, but, um, but that's just one of the things we look for when someone brings you a, a waiver of plat or a plat, uh, to make sure that there is such an area, uh, for a future owner.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, Jeff, one, one question. So this is going through the waiver of plat process. There's seven plus acres left. If they were to subdivide that again, it would not be eligible for the waiver of plat. Is that correct?
It would not be, under today's code, first of all, we have the zoning progress.
Right, right.
Uh, so there may, may not be a waiver of plat process available anyway.
Right.
Uh, but putting that aside, um, they would not be eligible to create another lot through the waiver of plat process for at least two years.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, some, uh, general comments. Um, you know, there's two ways to divide property. There's, uh, the normal plating process, which is time-consuming and expensive. And then we had, we came up with a waiver of plat, and that was designed to help the mom and pop, large acreage who wanted to give, like the Fitzekellies, who wanted to give stuff to their kids and their, okay, this kind of flies in the face of that in a major way. This really should...
Counsel, right now, we're just, if you have any questions for staff, we're right on that right now, and then we're going to allow the applicant to, to proceed, and then once we get into deliberations, then we can...
Okay.
Um, any other questions for staff? Okay. Uh, if the applicant will stand up and introduce yourself and your address and be represented?
Absolutely. Good evening, uh, mayor and council. My name is Jason Wilson. I work for Pillar Consultants. I represent the applicant. The address is five two three zero, South University Drive, Suite one oh four in Davie, Florida. Absolutely. Is that a little bit better? Jason Wilson is my name. Did you get my address?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to start off by thanking Mr. Cadens and Mr. Lay for a detailed review of this project. Um, the lot split, uh, in conformance with what you were just saying, the lot split is actually for the applicant's son. So the house that is being...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The, the lot splits is meant for the applicant's son. It is to the family. Um, we worked with, uh, Mr. Cadens to come up with an area, uh, for this agricultural reserve. And if you may, I have an exhibit that actually shows the layout, and we would be up for deed restricting the property with that area. If you'd like to see it, I can pass it around or...
I mean, is this something that has been already provided to the town?
Uh, I just received it recently. It was too late for packets, so the applicant has a, a physical, a hard copy.
Do you have enough copies for everybody on the council?
Mm-hmm. Should I just pass it to one person?
Uh, you can hand it to me, and then I'll pass it over. Maybe you can review this because I cannot read the typeface on there, it's way too small.
Sure, absolutely. What you're seeing is the southern parcel that we're looking to split off. Um, you, in the middle and to the left, you see a water body. It's labeled lake. Uh, to the right, in an orange color, um, bounded by red, is the location of the future home. Uh, the applicant is looking for roughly around four thousand, a little bit higher of square footage, with a gross square footage of around fifty-five hundred square feet. To, on the west side, which is on the left, uh, colored in a yellow, um, is the future paddock area that, uh, Mr. Cadens was talking about, as well as a future stable just to the south. Um, on the south side of the lake, there is an open, clear area for passage and maintenance and access between the two. In the northeast corner, the upper right of the split parcel, there's a future turnaround area proposed, as well as the twenty-five-foot access easement that takes you all the way up to Sterling Road.
Thank you.
Quick question. The, uh, the paddock in, in the stable, how far off the property line to the, uh, to the, uh, west is that? How far off the property line?
The, the actual stable is proposed to be fifty feet, a minimum of fifty feet, from the west and south property lines. The paddock, as you see it here, is roughly around thirty feet. The building setback, or sorry, the setback from the property.
I'm just going to note, uh, Jason, that you placed the paddock to the north of the barn, doesn't have to be there, it can encroach into a setback, so it could just be to the left side of the barn, you know, the west side of the barn as well.
Does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for the applicant from the council?
I don't know if this is appropriate, do we want to wait for public?
Well, if, if you have any direct questions for the applicant, you can ask them now. Otherwise, the applicant's, um, presentation will be concluded, and we'll open it up to...
I do have, I do, I do have questions for you. Um, the seven and a half acres, um, this is not a, uh, it's not a, you're splitting a lot in half. Would you be willing to deed restrict further, uh, denying further subdivision of the seven and a half acres?
No, we, no, we would not.
Okay. I'm going to have a difficult time supporting this.
Excuse me, you mentioned deed restriction earlier when you walked up, you'd be willing to deed restrict. What would the deed restriction be on the south property?
That was for the reserve area, the agricultural, uh, area that I believe is...
For the south property that we're looking to divide?
Correct.
Any other questions for the applicant by council? Okay.
Thank you.
Now we'll open it up for any comments from the public? Solely on this quasi-judicial application? Yeah?
New Hallingsworth, Hundred Ninety-Ninth Avenue. I have been sworn, and I have been vaccinated. Uh, I just got hold of this little color sheet. I want the town council to require a agricultural reserve area for this property, number one. And two, it looks like it's closer than fifty feet from the lake, which leads to possibly pollution of the lake, algae blooms, and contamination of groundwater. Looking at the little arrow that says fifty feet from the property line on the orange and the various area to the right to the lake, that is a defective to the agricultural area. Should be fifty feet from the lake also. And I'd like for you to require it. Also, the size of the bar. Is that the prototype bar that you're using? That's my question. He's busy. Anyway, we have looked at this before and discussed it. We have watched other property developments where a barn is not going to be physically possible within their properties. I do not want this ever to happen again within this town, and this is your first case. Require the barn, an agricultural area, paddock and everything to be fifty foot from the water body, and fifty foot for the barn from all property lines and water body. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Christina Brownlow, I was sworn in to the side over here, five three oh one, Southwest Third Red Lane. Uh, I have seen what has been mentioned here, I, I have seen take place on our street with a house which was built, and there was a nice pond in front, completely filled in. And from an environmental aspect, I question, what is that impact? And do we look at that? And if we allow one and another, what will subsequently come down the road? I, I would like to echo, uh, Newell's words on, is there sufficient area for a barn? And if we are, uh, wishing to fulfill our commitment to this rural lifestyle and what we're going forward with, with proposals for other land developments, is this in keeping? And if a builder wants to build a barn, what's the cost to fill in this portion of the lake to accommodate this? Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this application? Sure, come on. That's fine, it's still to be heard.
Anne Allen, one two seven oh one Mustang Trail.
Ms. Allen, can you raise your right hand? I want to swear your...
I sure can.
Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I want to bring the equestrian aspect of horse management into this. And horses need room. They cannot live twenty-four hours in a stall. And what I don't want to see is big barns and no turnout for these animals. It's actually against court of law to confine an animal for twenty-four hours in a stall. But that's what happens. People get greedy, they want to have too many horses, and they have half an acre for a turnout for five or ten horses. Technically, it should be at least an acre per horse, but we don't do that anymore because there's no more land. But there has to be some kind of provision that there is a minimum turnout. Otherwise, what you have is a barn with little cubicles, little postage stands for the horses to walk around, but it's not really a life for horses, and it's cruel to them. So let's give them the amount. I don't agree with setting back the pastures or paddocks from the fence line. Um, under Florida Farm Act, if you have animals, you want to use your property for the animals, possibly not up to the water, if that could pollute the water, but most manure is dissolved in the upper level of the soil. It doesn't go into groundwater, if that's what you're worried about. Um, and under best management practices, most people have composting bins where we keep our manure, where it's composted and it's either removed or, or used as fertilizer on the property. But from a, um, an agricultural aspect, manure dissolves very quickly in the top level and rarely goes into the groundwater. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? And again, this is solely on this quasi-judicial, this application.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you. Michelle McBride, one three eight five one, East Palmetto. Um, I would really just like to thank all of you for talking about the agricultural reserve on the property. I really appreciate it. It shows that, um, we're going in the right direction as far as keeping agriculture a very important part of this town. Um, when I look at the, the map, it shows that the lake is a significant portion of the property, and I think it, I mean, that would be up to, to, um, the engineers, but I didn't see a problem with filling part of that in for the agricultural preserve, especially if you could create the, um, the, the problem with the water retention by maybe making the lake deeper in some areas. Um, but again, I just want to thank the town for what they're doing, and it's just comforting to know that you're looking out for agriculture. Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak?
Okay, sir, can you, uh, raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Ryan Swift, uh, one eight one hundred, Southwest Sixtieth Street. I currently live, uh, on the Lake House property. Um, the property that been talked about, the plot, the plot waiver, I would be moving into with my fiancee, full intentions of starting a family. We love Southwest Ranches. I agree with the agricultural reserve. That's one of the reasons why we love Southwest Ranches. Uh, and, uh, I actually just spoke to my father, and we would deed restrict the seven and a half acre property to not subdivide again. Um, and I just wanted to say I appreciate you guys taking a look at this and hope that we can get the approval and start a family in Southwest Ranches.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak on this? Okay, now at this point, the applicant has the opportunity to cross-examine any of the, uh, public that spoke on the matter?
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
So again, this is your opportunity to cross-examine any of the public members that spoke on it. You'll have a opportunity after that to do a final argument.
With respect to the comment about having the stables relatively close to the lake, um, there's multiple places within this property where we could relocate that to provide a larger space.
Sorry, I'm going to have to stop right there. If, if you have a direct, if some, if somebody from the public made a direct comment or anything regarding that, you can ask that person directly. Otherwise, you can save any comments that you want to address in your closing arguments to those issues. So it's your choice on how you'd like to proceed on that. So it's your choice on how you'd like to proceed on that.
That's fine, I'll wait.
Any questions from the council or any members of the public that spoke on this item? Seeing none, the applicant can have any their final argument. Procedural, but yeah, we gotta do it.
I'd like a word. The lot is fairly large even though it is taking up, the lake is taking up a large portion of the property. There are multiple places where we could either propose the ag location. It doesn't necessarily need to be in that southwest corner. Also, as Mr. Keddes had mentioned, with the correct drainage approval from the South Broward Drainage District, we most likely would be able to fill a substantial portion or a small portion of the lake to be able to provide a setback if the southwest corner was de-restricted.
Zach, you close your floor. All right, thank you. Does the town staff have any final comments?
No.
And at this time, Russell, if you can hold the council for any disclosures.
Does council have any disclosures that they would like to make?
I had some conversations with the, some neighbors next door to the applicant's, Mr. Pope, concerning activities that were taking place on the property.
I've had none.
I've had none.
And based on those disclosures, will you be able to, will you be able to listen to all the evidence and base your decisions solely on confidence and substantial evidence that's made a part of the record?
Absolutely, they were concerned numerous code violations that were occurring on the property prior to tonight.
So at this time, the hearing is gonna be turned over to the board for deliberations. Gary, I know you have some comments.
Yeah, I think I kinda may have all, but just to reiterate, the applicant has agreed to de-restrict the seven and a half acres for more, no further subdivision forever. I can live with that. As you know, the waiver of plat, we don't use this usually as a vehicle for this because the opportunity is there to further divide three more times. And that involves planning process and that involves a lot of engineering. You know, this is the shortcut method. And if this is all it's ever gonna do, then I'm okay with that. If it goes, if it goes beyond that, and so that's why I pose a rebuttal about the deed restriction. It looks like all the eyes are gone and the tides are being crossed at the property at this point.
Yeah, Steve, real quick, I just wanna ask if they said they could possibly fill in the lake, would they be able, or would they tell us that they'd be able to keep the paddock and the stable area fifty foot from the lake? Because it was a concern of pollution or whatever, would they be able to keep it fifty foot from the lake?
I think that's part of the restriction that we're putting on there.
Okay.
Is that that would be part of it, to make sure that is, I think that's something that we all-
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my only really concern, and it seems possibly remedied at this point, is that if there is sufficient setbacks with the barn away from the water retention area to have the ag reserve. If those conditions are satisfied, then that could satisfy my inquiries in addition to restrictions on the deed that the applicant has, the public just recently discussed that.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, all of my questions have been asked by you guys, so I don't really have any in addition, some requests are asked. Thank you. I have a few more concerns that I did wanna bring up. I'm concerned, I agree, I agree with the restriction. And Gary, I appreciate you driving home that point. I feel much, much better knowing that it's not gonna be subdivided again. I'm concerned about the water there. And, you know, it's kind of a two-edged sword, okay? From one side, we absolutely have to have the space for the animals there. But when I hear potential filling it in, we're in rainy season. We had this huge event in November. We start filling in those lakes and it only makes the situation even worse. There, so I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how, frankly, I don't wanna see it filled in. I wanna see enough space for the animals and I want the lake to stay, to be honest with you, if it was my choice. The other thing that is really concerning to me is, and this is not just something that could happen, it's something that happened not too long ago in a property that's not, it's only one block from me, is they have a large lake on their property. We had an exceptional storm come through and the horses, two of the horses, as a matter of fact, did not know where the lake began. And they've also lost a drown. So there, I wanna see some sort of restriction there. I would like to know what your plan is to protect the animals from that lake. I'd like to see some sort of restriction there that will ensure that the animals are safe from that. Because I don't ever wanna see that repeated again in our town. So those are my concerns. My concerns basically are that we can accomplish what we need to do with the animals without filling in the lake and that the animals are protected from the lake. You know, in a normal event, they know exactly where it is. But in this particular case, it was an exceptional, virtually the whole property was underwater and it was, it was a tragedy.
Mayor, I have a question. It just came to mind just now, and I apologize, I probably should have asked it earlier, but it didn't click. And it's a question for the applicant. Sir, if you could come to the mic, please. Is, looking at the areas, is there, there's a South Broward drainage canal that runs along the eastern side of the property? It connects into all the, the whole canal system of that area. Is there a direct or indirect, a direct connection between the lake and the canal?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't believe there's a control structure or a culvert that connects the private lake with the South Broward-
So it's, the lake is a closed system?
As far as I understand, yes.
Okay, thank you, answer there.
Yeah, can you respond to?
Absolutely. We do not have any intention of filling any portion of the lake. I only may mention that if for some reason everyone was very focused on the southwest corner for the ag area, we could potentially fill it to meet the concerns of having a fifty-foot setback from the edge of water. We have other areas, other room to be able to provide that fifty feet and to provide that separation that we're looking for.
What about protection for animals? Shortly.
A couple things, we could potentially put in when and if a barn would go in, we could enclose it with a fence, just like it is around the paddock itself. From an engineering standpoint, this onsite lake provides a tremendous amount of storage for this lot. The chance of flooding on this lot because of the size of the lake, where that other instance that you mentioned where the site filled up and it was, it looked, all looked like a lake and you didn't know what was the portal and what was the draw hog, where the horses unfortunately perished, the chance of that happening would probably be a five hundred or a thousand year event.
Were you here in November?
I was, I was.
I think it can happen.
It was, it was a thousand year event and part of, part of the cleanup for our-
I'd like to see, I don't know, is there a way to put a restriction on there that should animals be placed on that property that a fence, a protective fence would be there? I would like that added as a additional restriction.
Mr. Mayor, do you have my question? And just to clarify, the owner's son is purchasing this property?
That's correct.
I'm good, any other comments from the council? Okay. At this time, you have the option and a vote shall be taken to either approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. And at that time, you're going to have to ensure that there was competent substantial evidence in the record as part of this proceeding and that based upon the staff report and the evidence that the applicant has meant and satisfied all the applicable criteria within the code. So at this time, we can entertain a motion.
Make a motion to, to approve this with the stipulations that have been requested.
With the, well, we're gonna have to be very specific on this. Yeah, on each of the conditions that need to be met. So I mean, we can start with, and we can go through this, but we can start with all the conditions that are within the staff report. And then we have the condition, I just wanna make sure that it's correct, that the applicant is willing to de-restrict the property on the seven, what's the criteria? I may need your help on this.
Yeah, it's to, number one, de-restrict the property to a maximum of two lots, so it cannot be further subdivided after this application's approved. To relocate the agricultural reserve area to a location that is, that meets the fifty-foot setbacks from the property line and at least fifty feet from the lake to the, from, measured from the barn and the paddock. Another that can be closer than fifty feet. And also to, to include when, at such time that a barn may be constructed or horses may be located on the property, that they have to be protected from the lake. And we'll leave that, I think, flexible but acceptable to the town reviewer at the time.
Including any conditions that are within the staff report?
Yes, yeah.
So that's the motion?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
Could be agricultural animals, not just horses.
Are we gonna restrict it just to horses? Does it make sure-
Horses or any other animals, yes.
Farm animals.
I think we'll talk to county other discussion.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Brinkus?
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Jeff, on number five, we're turning that over to you.
Yes, the petitioner's here to request a, one more deferral to finish working out the issues with the adjacent property owner and as requested, to be deferred to September thirteenth.
I'll make a motion to table, Andy, is that date, yes, to September thirteenth?
Well, is that the right meeting?
Yeah, it's a Monday, it's a Monday meeting, I was told.
I would second that.
Well, we just need to make sure it's a time certain, that works.
Yes, it's Monday, September thirteenth. It's because that's the same night as our first public budget hearing and we can't conflict with the school board or the county or anything else. So that first meeting in September is moved until, until Monday the thirteenth. So this would be a council meeting following the budget hearing.
Mayor, I think, mayor, for the record, I think I need to read the resolution.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, who made the motion to table to that meeting?
Okay.
So this is a resolution in final order of the town council of the town of Hennepin, Florida, approving waiver plat application number WP-32-21. To subdivide 4.866 gross acres of property into two lots of 2.003 and 2.863 net acres, generally located on the west side of Hancock Road, approximately 1,600 feet south of East Palomino Drive, comprising portions of tracks thirty-nine and forty of the Everglades Sugar and Land Company subdivision, section thirty-four, township fifty-south, range forty-east. According to the plat thereof, reported in plat book one, page one fifty-two of the public records of Miami Dade County and adjoining land, as more particularly described in exhibit A here too, authorizing the mayor, town administrator and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to properly effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for recordation and providing effectively.
Russell, who did you record as seconding that?
I was just gonna ask that same question.
I'll second it.
Okay, was it David? All right, so we have a motion to second that.
Any discussion?
Just have a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually glad the applicant made a request to extend this. It really concerned me, concerned the adjacent property owner.
This is for the motion to table to the September thirteenth meeting. Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
And Mayor Brinkus?
Yes.
Motion to table is passed.
Great, thank you. All right, I have a number six public comments. First up is Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, 199th Avenue, Noel Hollingsworth. I wanna speak on COVID first this evening. Again, as I did at the last meeting, ask everyone who has not been vaccinated to please get your vaccination shots so in three months, you will be safe. I am very upset with fifty percent of this county because that is the amount that has not been vaccinated, twenty-nine percent actually. And I would ask everyone else to please wear a mask when you're indoors and social distance because we are seventy-five percent higher infection rate than we were two weeks ago and our hospitals are beginning to overflow in Broward County. Memorial Hospital has opened two new wings for COVID patients. I was speaking to someone who is an inhalation therapist at the hospital and they are super stressed out and they were just starting to relax a little bit. They are back to the pressure that they were last summer, which was horrible, and we're heading there again. The next part is on this waste management thing that we got presented to tonight. I want everyone to remember all of the terrible things, and I'll say it without saying some other words, that the county did to us when we were in the other twenty-five-year slavery of Broward County. They say, the county isn't recycling. Well, I'm sorry, Southwest Ranches recycles industriously. The problem is, they can't sell the recyclings. It's being burned. It's being shipped out from our recycling plant to an incinerator up in Georgia. Most of it, unless it's the clear plastic, which is clean. That's the only thing they can sell right now. And the glass, at least recycled glass, and that is sold. The problems they're having is the other cities. We have always been conscientious. Yes, we pay a heck of a lot. But the other costs by the other cities are hidden in their general budget. What I'd like to see is, if they want to us, become part of them, where is the cost savings? Where is the profit to us? Why should we pay for someone else that can't take care of the road? So, take a very hard look at it, because what we went through last time, we should not ever go through again. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Next speaker is Michelle McBride. Next speaker is Mary Ann Allen.
Mary Ann Allen, one-two-seven oh-one Butzang Trail. I probably am the living proof that if I knew I was gonna live this long, I would've taken better care of myself. Too many horse accidents, too many everything. But anyway, I wanna add to what Noel just said about what we're going through with waste, and it all boils down to sustainable development. I think you've all heard that word many, many times. Just take a drive through Pembroke Pines, take a drive through Miramar. That's not sustainable development. Every square inch is going up four, five, six stories, and all these people create waste. Um, when do we say enough with the development? Because we can't sustain it. We can't deal with the garbage, we can't deal with the, um, services that we have to supply these people, and when it comes to hurricanes, that's a lot of people to take care of if we have a disaster, which, as we see around the world, flooding, tornadoes, earthquakes, the world is becoming much more unstable. Our weather is becoming unstable, and I fear this year that we're gonna have more vicious storms, we're gonna have large animals, as well as people that need to be rescued in Southwest Ranches, and I'd like to talk more about having a plan if this should occur. Uh, a few years ago, we had trees all over the roadways where people couldn't get out for days, and, um, you know, our disaster preparedness is something that we should really take into consideration with the change in world weather and disasters. These thousand-year storms seem to be coming up more often. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Christina Brownlow.
Thank you again, Chris Brownlow, Thoroughbred Lane. Uh, I have the pleasure this year of, uh, serving as the HOA president for Sunshine Ranches, where I have grown up. First of all, thank you all. You have been diligent in attending all of our HOA meetings. It has been very meaningful, and the residents are extremely appreciative, as am I. And to the gentlemen who I hope are still in the back from Davie Police Department, they were given great accolades for their vacation watch program. Two of our residents were very appreciative, complimentary of them, as the gentleman showed up several times during the course of days while the folks were gone. So I highly encourage folks to take advantage of this. It's a wonderful program, and they are wonderful people. Thank you to Rod and Emily for the Tisdor program and savings in our areas, and I know that we received it in here earlier, so please, will you extend our, our thanks to them? Our, uh, HOA newsletters are now again at town hall, gentlemen, so you can also access them on our website, but if you'd like hard copy, anyone, they are available for you in the hall. And, uh, we have such things in there as a, uh, an article on the effect of lightning on horses, presented by one of our residents, who sits behind me, Michelle McBride. We put together an HOA membership article, a proposal about, uh, fireworks issue, which we thank you all for taking up and will be, uh, looking at this evening on the agenda. So, um, we are super appreciative of you listening to us and taking up our concerns. We are looking at painting our entryways at our two, our two entrances, the one off Hancock and the other off of Sterling. We have requested through the arts board that we could paint and keep the same color as we want to install our pioneer plaques, so we're moving forth with that. I had mentioned our social media. Please, I, I would say to all of you, take a look at our Facebook. It's, uh, facebook.com slash Southwest Ranches. It is in, it is mentioned in our magazine, and we balance nicely off of you with any of the concerns and items that are going on in the town, so everything is up to date and prevalent. Please save the date, December twelfth will be our combined November, December HOA meeting. You will all get invitations to join us. It's gonna be an event at the park and very family-oriented. Uh, and, uh, I wanna thank the residents and the board with which I serve. Could not do this without them and all of their support and great friendship and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That's the final speaker, Mr. McRae. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, the next item is board reports. Do we have any board reports this evening? Evening, Jason.
Hey, good evening. Um, definitely grateful you're back. Uh, so, uh, good evening, uh, mayor, council staff, uh, Jason Helberg, chair of the HOPOR. Uh, I just wanna start by thanking the board for their patience, uh, and efforts this past year. Um, you know, it's not been easy, meeting over Zoom. Uh, you know, there's a different dynamics that we all have when we're in person, and I think they do a fantastic job. We had some, um, some difficult tasks, you know, going through loggages and the language, the way it's written. It's not easy, you know, for people that, you know, that don't do that every day, so, uh, but I think they did a fantastic job, and I'm really appreciative, and really grateful to be part of that board. You know, earlier this year, uh, you guys, uh, you know, council implemented a zoning in progress, um, and tasked the board with, um, exploring ways to minimize the impact of new residential developments, and also while preserving our rural lifestyle. Uh, last meeting, the board started on these discussions, and we made some progress. Um, also want to thank Jeff, uh, or Jeff Cadham, who's our town planner, for putting together some materials for our last meeting, uh, which I thought was really helpful, uh, to review some of the, uh, recent residential developments such as surplus, uh, such as, um, magnolia, uh, uh, reserve or estates. Uh, because we need to analyze what, what, what transpired there, and how, how does future, uh, developments, or how do we, how do we mitigate some of the challenges that happen there. Um, and then just the, the general, uh, you know, public of the residents, you know, I just wanna remind everyone that the HOPOR does meet every third, third Thursday, and that we absolutely welcome any feedback, any suggestions. Uh, you know, we have some difficult discussions, and, uh, you know, it's very helpful to get that feedback, so. It's all happy moments, so thank you all, and I'm grateful.
Thank you, Chris. Great, thank you, Jason, and thank you to the board. You do a great job. Any other board reports? Seeing none, council member comments?
Hold on.
Alright.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. Got a lot, a lot of stuff on the agenda today. Uh, just wanna make some public announcements and a, and a few, uh, comments. One is, I would like to remind everybody that there's a hazmat at the barn on nine eleven, uh, Saturday, from eight to two, there'll be shredding and a prescription drop-off. Um, next item I wanna talk about, uh, we had, we recently had a photo shoot, uh, at the barn for the first responder, no one leave that to Bob and, um, uh, Councilman Albreton, to discuss, and they did a fantastic job. Uh, it, you know, it's just amazing when we pool our talents, everything that gets put together and, and, you know, everything that happens. Um, we have a nine eleven ceremony, uh, at town hall, uh, here, where we're gonna have a, uh, a very special, uh, plaque being done. Um, Andy, what time, what time is, Andy, there, uh, sorry, let's see, what time is that?
Uh, I'm having microphone difficulties at, having microphone difficulties at this hour.
Hand signals.
We have not finalized the time yet.
Okay, to be announced.
Oh, I think, I think, I think we got it.
Okay. Time to announce, yes.
Yes, okay, it's to, uh, to be announced. Um, but it is on nine eleven, I can, I can assure you that, alright? So after you turn in your leftover paint for us, light bulbs at the barn, then come over to town hall. Um, Monday, uh, on the sixteenth of August, uh, Broward County property praiser is gonna be back here at town hall now, from ten to one, uh, for any, uh, homestead exemption, any questions, agricultural exemptions, et cetera. We've also got Flowmobile coming back, um, on the twenty-fifth of August, from ten to two, but it's by appointment, so you have to call first. Uh, call town hall to, uh, arrange for appointments, um, for that. We have a photo contest, uh, with the rural arts board for next year's calendar. The photos must be submitted by the thirteenth of, uh, September, and it deals with parks. It's very easy. We have, we have really nice parks throughout our town. Take a really good picture of it, and we'll put it in the calendar. And, uh, it's, it's something that I, I always look forward to, seeing all the pictures. Last year, we had a rough year with COVID. Hopefully, this year will be much, much better. Um, the Seek Use Society is putting on a barbecue, uh, vegetarian and non-vegetarian. This Sunday, uh, the first of August, uh, celebrating and thanking everybody for the five K, uh, run last year. Uh, it's at the Equestrian Park, um, from twelve to four. Uh, it's, it's free to public, so please, uh, you know, participate. Um, at the, uh, just wanna bring this up in general. At the meeting last night at Sunshine Ranches, there was a lot of, uh, uh, comments about, uh, Central Broward's drainage canals, and, um, what I'd like to do is, uh, Andy, if you could, contact the people over in Central Broward and start the ball rolling, and then, uh, throw the ball to David, and David throw a ball to me, and then I'll throw, throw it to Jim, and by the time we, by the time they get enough calls, this is really a squeaky wheel thing, where they come by and they clean the co-, the coconuts out of the canal and the debris. You just have to, you know, it's like mosquito control. You just gotta make the calls, you know, you know, for that. So, that's, uh, that's coming up. Um, hey, an item of note, um, I found an old logo, and this is just, this is not, this is just a smile on your face thing. Uh, I did find Joan's signature, uh, name.
Did you, really?
Yeah, yeah, for a small fee, I'll show you guys where it's at. Okay, uh, I'm kidding aside, I did find it, okay? I don't know, I don't know what it was, but I'll, I'll show you guys where it's at. Um, right now, I'm working on it, I'm working on an idea, uh, with the fire assessment and the budget, and for helping the residents, and this is gonna be a, a one-off. You kinda inspired me there by saying, "Hey, we need to think outside the box." Well, I went outside the, the box, the crate, you know, the container, whatever, uh, and I, and I'm working on something with Andy. I, we hope to have it fleshed out, as an all, as a, to take some of the stain out of it, um, by our next budget meeting, which is in August. Um, we're, we're trying to put this numbers together where it all makes sense, and Marty doesn't have heart attack, and everybody else doesn't have, you know, out of gas on it, so, but we are, I, I am working on something.
That's great.
So, yeah, uh, and so I just want everybody to, you know, keep it open mind, this is out of, this is entirely out of box, okay? But it's a one-time thing that may take some of the, take some of the pain out of, uh, what we're gonna be discussing later on today. And, uh, let's see. Yep, out of gas. I'm done.
Mr. Mary, okay, ahead.
I've got a couple of things I wanted to discuss. Um, the solid waste discussion that, or presentation that we saw before, definitely concerns me. I remember when it fell apart back in fifteen or so, and I also remember the reasons why. There was a lot of funny business. We looked ready, ended up with a free plant. I mean, it was spine-bending, you know, and in my mind, the county commission had way too much control over it, and you can ask Andy, when this idea started to circulate again, my immediate answer was, "I wanna be on that. I wanna keep an eye on this stuff." I don't know if we should be, you know, jumping in with enthusiasm on this until they prove themselves, and that might be the feelings of a number of the other cities in, in the county, because I don't think we wanna be jumping into something that's, A, gonna cost our residents more money, uh, and, you know, right now, I'm hearing, "We like to do more recycling." Recycling is like an all-time low in this country right now. Now, knock yourselves out, please, let's, let's lift that up, but, uh, I'd rather sign up for a proven model, that, you know, if, if it is gonna increase our costs over time, I'd really like to understand that before we say, "Yeah, I wanna send." So, so that, that, those are the comments. You know, he kept bringing up mistrust. I'm glad they brought that up. Hopefully, people are asking questions about the mistrust, because I'm square in the middle of that. Um, so the first responders' photo, uh, opportunity we had over at the barn, well, I guess, third time was the charm. We had fifty people show up between the volunteer fire department, the Davie Fire Department, the Davie PD. Uh, the Davie PD had patrol units there, motor units there, they had the mounted unit there, they had SWAT, and also the Davie chief, chief was also there, which was, uh, a phenomenal show. We also had some residents show up as well that are first responders. Uh, I think the, the key thing is, I, I really wanna make sure that the, um, the rural arts advisory, uh, design advisory board, uh, get some recognition for this, because it was their idea. This was a great idea. Um, let me read off the names of the, uh, the board members. Rose Albreton, Barbara Gonzalez, Sage Semeta, Wendy Halberg, Judy Parker, Terry Ramirez, and Robert Zerota. They've been batting this around for probably six months, eight months, and we finally finished it up. Uh, from the video that, uh, that I was able to capture, we've got a fun piece of video. We're gonna use the drone shots to come up with probably a centerfold-type shot for the town newsletter, recognizing our first responders, and also, it's, it's really important to highlight it. I mean, here we are in our fourth wave now. Uh, the hospitals are filling back up again, and these are the folks that show up first, whether it's the EMS folks, whether Davie PD makes it there before, or our volunteer fire department. They're the first ones dealing with a lot of these folks that have gotten very sick and, and need to be moved from their homes, so, you know, it's, it's important to recognize them. I think first responders is a word that we didn't even use two, three years ago, uh, other than minimally now, everybody understands the term, and I think we all know one, two, three, or four. So, let me see, um, one other comment that I, I really wanted to discuss with you guys for a minute, with the council, uh, and this is something I also wanna open up to the, um, to the drainage committee. There's something that Broward County puts on, I guess they're doing it every year now. It's, it used to be called Broward Water Leaders Academy. Now it's called Broward Water Leaders and Climate Academy, and what's changed is, in the past, it's been about how the county drains, um, our, our overall system for water management, everything from the tertiary canals that we have in our town, in most cities, it's, you know, sewer systems into the secondaries, which are the larger canals, and then in, either to the main canals or the ocean or the Everglades. You know, originally, they brought us through that, they showed us how it all worked, they, they took us on a field trip out in the Everglades to show, uh, the water quality, all sorts of things, but it's really gotten far more, um, general than that, and a lot of it has to do with, with climate resiliency. That started two years ago. I went two years ago, and I would encourage everybody on the council to do it, because it's showing us what they're doing all around us. It's showing us what the county is doing, the way the water management districts, Kevin does a presentation at it, for example, uh, talking about what goes on in our area. Uh, and the reason it's important is, we do drainage projects here every year, and we work with Kevin, which is good, because he's our tie to the larger systems, whether it's South Florida or, or, you know, uh, uh, our own systems. So, this, it's, it's four sessions over five months. It's on a Friday morning, the, the, I think they've actually put the calendar out there, I don't have it in front of me, but I encourage you all to know, uh, to, to go and learn, because it's, it's good. It's, it's very interesting. It taught me a lot about how the overall system works, uh, not just the, you know, Griffin Road Canal, which has got most of our focus, and, uh, now that they're getting into resiliency more, for example, they were talking about the amount of seawalls that are being planned now, and, you know, that need to be built in the next few years, and Fort Lauderdale needs something like a hundred and twenty-five miles of seawall. Now, if that seems like a big number, it's five million bucks a mile. So, you start to hear these things, it's gonna impact us all. Now, whether they come up with some other type of tax, you know, I, I wanna stay on top of this and continue to understand the direction that the county is taking for how they're gonna continue to manage our water in conjunction with South Florida and, uh, and the water districts within. So I'd encourage everybody to get involved with it. We all got an email on it, I think, about a week ago. Um, if you don't- If you don't, I'm sure Andy could forward. I'd also like to open this up to a couple of people on the Drainage Committee as well, if you guys have no objection to that. All right, folks, thank you. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief. As you know, I'll stand up here real quick. That's my thing. I like to stand when I speak. Mayor, thank you, council, staff, and residents. What a great time to be here again. I got two quick things. You heard from Bob to say thank you to the Rural Arts Board for organizing that photo shoot. Took a lot of work on their part, and I'm very proud of what they did. I'd like to thank Jeff Holbus and Lee Bennett for their participation. With those two, it went smooth with the officers and the firemen that showed up. And it was a great gathering along with the residents. We didn't have as many residents because of the time. It was 6 o'clock in the evening, so it was hard for a lot of the residents, or nurses and doctors in the area, to get out. I'd also like to say thank you to our town. I'd like to say thank you to Andy. Andy said yes when the board asked if we could provide T-shirts for the first responders, and this is what they came up with. And I'm very proud of the town for sponsoring this. This was given to all the first responders that showed up. I saw some the next day wearing them very proudly through town hall, so that was very nice. So, thank you, Andy, for that. And lastly, I am trying to revamp the Green Meadows Civic Association. It's been kind of defunct for a while. The paperwork is there. We just need to elect new officers. I am talking to residents in Green Meadows, Deems Ranches, and part of the Ivanhoe Estates over by Publix to see if I can get eight or 10 couples together and discuss it. Once we get the groundwork laid, I think it'll take off and go. And I'd like to ask the other homeowners associations, when this does get going, I'd like to call on you, maybe to come talk to them and tell them that the homeowners association, I say homeowners, I'm sorry, the civic association's not like a homeowners association. We're not going to tell you that you can't paint your door purple, or that you have to have green flowers, or whatever. It's a civic organization, so we're working real hard to get that revamped. Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, a quick question. Are you guys setting up the association so anybody can join, or you've got to be within those subdivisions?
I'll take anybody. I'm not proud. You know, I belong to the Rollin Oaks Association, because we didn't have one. And, you know, I've attended a lot of the country estates, and I'm proud to say that I've also attended a lot of the Sunshine Ranches, you know? But, yeah, I'll take anybody. I'm not proud.
You have to make sure that your rules are set up properly.
Yes.
Because, for example, with Sunshine Ranches, I know they love to have you, but their rules prohibit anybody who doesn't, well, they exclude people from the association that don't live in the area. Country Estates is wide open. Roca's wide open.
Well, Roca won't allow you to vote. You can, yeah, you can be a member, but you can't vote, which makes sense, right?
They have different rules, so I'm just bringing that up to you.
Well, I think the paperwork is there. Mr. Polikoff has looked into it, and the paperwork, I think, is there in place already. I haven't read through it all, but he circled a name on there, and he put nostalgia on it, and it was quite funny. I did look through there, and I found the name of a person. It was the vice president, and he had a little smiley face next to him. It was my ex-wife, Joy. So, you know, no, that's all right. That's fine. But we are going to try and revamp that if at all possible, yeah. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, if I'm, I just had to say it out loud when I heard that.
Talk back to follow, but it is your turn.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Looks like members of the audience are kind of Sunshine Ranches folks. Hi, everybody. Gary, I want to thank you for thinking outside the box. That's really been a big concern with the fire, and, um...
Don't say, yeah, you haven't heard it.
All right, well, you know, I like to hear options. I like to hear options. Tuesday night, everybody Tuesday night, actually evening, I showed up a little late, actually a little late, I guess. We had 50 folks, some more, from the first responders' photo shoot, Davie Police Department, Davie Fire Rescue, Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Department, big supporter of those folks. And that was a great idea put on by the Rural Arts and Design Advisory Board. It was a fabulous idea, and I can't wait to see that photo in the rancher. Want to, something that I didn't hear tonight, and we've heard month, week after week, or two weeks after two weeks, do want to make sure that the council is, keeps the counties' plight on the agenda, because that's a really important issue. You know, I drive past that property every day that's been their concern, and just want to make sure that they know that we got their, we got their back. Make sure everybody, if you haven't had your COVID shot, please get it. I read a recent report that the Memorial West, the ICUs went from 30 to 120 in two weeks. I had a court hearing yesterday where, now, it was Bay County, up in Panama City area, where one of the judges told me that between 70% to 80% of the employees in that courthouse have been home because of COVID. That, and they can't get anything done. They lost 70% to 80% of their employees in that courthouse because of COVID. Thankfully, we've got 51%, but they're 33%, 34%. We're doing a better job, but I don't think 51 is enough. Mr. Hartman, I want to thank you. I want to echo your comments about the solid waste. I think every one of us is on the board with fiscal conservatism and how our residents pay their taxes. And just to blindly follow what the county's saying, it's not going to be something that I'm going to support. I had mentioned that it's got to be some give and take. They're going to ask for a little bit more from us. Well, we're going to want something more from the county on this. I'm really hoping that they're going to follow up with that. And recycling, I do recall that years ago, Sunshine Ranches was one of the leaders in the recycling movement, with Norman Lezier and John Glickman initiating that effort in Sunshine Ranches. That was something that was initiated many, many, many years ago. Let's see, going to the Rural Arts Advisory Board and Design Advisory Board, I want to congratulate Rose Albritton, being elevated to the chair with the, I guess, the leading by leader, Joan Rose. She's done so much for that board from the inception. And I'm confident that Rose will do a great job in fulfilling the effort of that board. And congratulations to Sage Semeta, who was elected as vice chair of that advisory board. And as you know, that we've been, the advisory board's been working really hard on the wall at Founder's Park, right over there by CBS, and just on the west side of CBS that wall. Laura Watson was awarded as designated, Warren, 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 I'm, or, or, Lauren Warren, was it, awarded as the designated neurologist. So, we're going to see her art on that board. So, that just kind of wraps up my comments. It's nice to see folks out here. Mr. Parker, always love to see you with us. Oh, yes, we are. Your presence, your presence touches every one of us. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, and that wraps up my comments. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, can I take 30 seconds real quick, if you would?
Absolutely.
All right. I...
Start the timer, Russell, please.
Yes, please. I guarantee you won't need 30 seconds, but I am remiss. I forgot to thank one person, Mr. Bob Hartman. The fellow that came out with his drone, came out with his camera, came out weeks ahead of time to practice with the drone, so that he could get the shot that he needed. And he organized, had a map laid out where everybody's set up. Thank you, Bob. We are very much looking forward to it. I got 20 seconds left over.
You did great. You did great. Absolutely. All right, just a few items. Most of what I was going to talk about has already been touched on. The presentation that we saw earlier this evening on waste, I, like, as has been said on the council tonight, I also echo those concerns. I do feel like this is something that's worth listening to and exploring. I am certainly not buying in or jumping in by any fashion, but this is not an easy problem. And so, I think it behooves us to listen to all alternatives and figure out which one's the best for us. So, that's kind of my approach to it. I have some real misgivings. I will say, I'm a little bit more comfortable than this, than the old one, because it's not really the county that's doing this. It is really a group from, emanating from the municipalities, but that no way, you know, covers up all the issues. So, but it's worth listening to. This is a real problem. It's not going away. This is a cost that's only going to go up, so let's look at all the alternatives. But I know, I wanted to reiterate something, you know. Time and time again, traffic issues are just continuous. They never end. And I know I've already put it on agenda for a meeting with Andy on Monday, but Mary Ann, I want to reiterate your idea that really what we, one of the things, the basic things that we should be and could be doing is getting up more signs. I just think a lot of folks don't even realize that it's 25 miles an hour on our residential roads. I think if we were to ask them what it is, I think most would say it's probably 30, maybe even 35. And so, the more signs that we can get up there and reiterate that it's 25 miles an hour, I think that will be a good start to let folks know that these are residential neighborhoods. We've got animals. We've got children. Let's take it easy. So, I like to see that, and like I said, Andy and I are going to talk about that on Monday. I want to, this is more just kind of like a shout-out, because I, it's something that I am very much committed to. And we run into obstacle after obstacle after obstacle, but it's going to happen one day, folks. We're going to get a farmer's market in this town, and it's, you know, we still have tons of obstacles to go through, but we're talking about it. We're working on it. I just think it's who we are, and it's what we need to do. And so, I want you all to know that it's not a forgotten idea. It's not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination. We've got a ton of obstacles to still go through, but we're working on it, and I believe we're going to make it. I believe it's going to happen, so. Yeah, it's great. We mentioned the 9/11 event. That is really, you know, that is an event that was generated through the residents of this town, saying we need to do something like that. And so, I really appreciate that, and I believe it 100%. I'm really excited the way staff and the residents have worked together to come up with an event that I think will be, we can be proud of, but it sets the right tone for what it's all about. So, I'm really pleased with how that's coming along. And then, I was very disappointed this week, unfortunately. I had a commitment come up, and I was not able to be there Tuesday evening. Believe me when I tell you, I was very disappointed in that. I heard it was an amazing event. I can't wait to see the video. I'll echo the thanks to the board, really echo the thanks to the first responders. You know, this is, you know, just, they do an amazing job, day after day after day. There is no day off for the first responders. Every day, they've got to be there. And so, what the board did, what the administration did, to pull that all together, and the first responders coming out there was fantastic. And I also want to echo, I don't think we appreciate enough all that this guy sitting next to me does, that Bob does, to make those events something that we can relive and share for years to come. So, thank you, Bob, on that. Yeah. All right, and with that, I'll conclude my comments. All right, next is legal comments.
Rose, legal comments.
All right.
Glad to be here.
Good to have you here, Richard. Thank you. All right, and then administrative comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be equally brief. I'm not quite as brief as Richard. Just a couple of things. We're watching the Delta variant. The numbers creep up. There's been a lot of people that have spoken to that, the CME Council and members of the public. The county reinstituted today a mask requirement for county staff and all visitors to county facilities. So, we're currently looking at that. I know the governor is kind of at odds with that, so I was kind of watching how that was going to play out. But we are, will be considering that going forward, unfortunately. Hopefully, we get this back under control pretty quickly. Next is the community survey results.
You know, if I can just jump in there just for a second. I just, once again, I know we said this in the past, but I really appreciate your leadership on this. You do your research and act on the facts and act accordingly. And I have no doubt that you and the staff will make the right decision, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you. The second thing I want to touch on was the community survey. The results have been tabulated. We were just finalizing, some of the graphics, some of the charts weren't as clear as we wanted them to be. Those have been put in place, and I'm actually going to give you all a copy of that this evening, so you have that. So, we'll be able to start having some discussions and planning our next strategic planning coming out of that, including Councilmember Albritton, Safety Committee, and some of those other things that are on hold pending those results. So, we're going to be able to move those things forward. Some of the results were consistent with what we expected, and there were some surprises, but I'll let you read through it and find those. And just in closing, I wanted to wish Vice Mayor Hartman an early happy birthday, because his birthday is tomorrow.
Oh, man.
Thank you.
We'll bypass the singing, if that's okay.
59 again, huh?
Would anyone in the audience like to sing a happy birthday song?
All right, great. Thank you, Andy. All right, item number 11.
Wait a minute, Councilman Albritton. I don't have the manual time. I want the happy birthday song. Hold on. It's coming. Two, one, here we go.
You know, unless you go up on the mic, it's not going to, it's not going to...
That was perfect, which you want.
Double Maryland.
Awesome.
It's a teacher. Listen, I'm some of Maryland, but I'm not all of Maryland. Strike from the dogs, Russell.
I believe we were on item number 11. I got thrown, so. An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving the 10-year water supply facilities work plan, WS FWP, and adopted implementing amendments to the goals, objectives, and policies of the utilities element and capital improvements element of the town of Southwest Ranches Comprehensive Plan, authorizing and transmitting of the 10-year WS FWP and related comprehensive plan amendments to reviewing agencies providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing for an effective...
Motion to approve?
Actually, before you put the motion on there.
Okay.
Is this, is this ready, or is this not?
This is a motion to table.
Yeah, this take is not ready to come out of the oven layer, and we're going to ask you to table this item until, actually, it has September 9th in the books. It's September 13th.
I retract that.
Thank you. Do you have another?
Motion to table?
Thank you.
Date certain, which was, I didn't hear.
September 13th.
September 13th, 7:00 PM.
And we have a second?
Yep.
All right, you can call a question, please.
On the motion to table, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item number 12.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, if I may say something, just as Marty's getting settled over there from finances. The next three items are all budget-related. We're going to set the preliminary mortgage rate, fire assessment, solid waste fee. Marty does have a PowerPoint that he will share with you. Just, I'll say to all of you and to the public, tonight is not an in-depth budget presentation or discussion. It's more preponderary. It's, we need to meet our trim notice requirements, and this allows us to do that. The rates that will be set tonight are a maximum. It sets the ceiling, not the floor. There's still an opportunity, as Councilmember Jablonski talked about, pulling some rabbits out of hats. There is the opportunity to do all those things going forward as part of the process. So, tonight, we're just going to ask you to set those maximum rates, so that we meet our requirements and go forward. And other than that, before I turn over... And other than that, before I turn it over to Marty, because I know he's just about ready, I do want to take a moment to thank him and Budget Finance Team for the effort that they put in, really all year long, but certainly in the months leading up to this home stretch of the budget process. The rates tonight, the budget workshop next month, and then the budget hearings in September. They've truly done an outstanding job. And I know Russell's worked very closely with them as well throughout the departmental meetings and other things. So I thank him for that. And I think Marty may be ready, so I probably should shut up and turn it over to him.
All right. Well done. Okay, Marty, it's all yours.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. We have a PowerPoint great that's up right now and we're covering three agenda items in a row in sequence. Number 12, 13, and 14. We'll cover each, do a little stop in between, open it up for discussion, and then move to the next. First, I wanted to let you know that your staff is proud to present your 10th proposed budget tonight under the leadership of our Town Administrator Andy Burns. All of us are either on Zoom tonight or, oh, I wasn't aware of that. Okay. You have staff in the audience tonight. I'm happy to have Rich Strum, your controller. He's going to help me with the PowerPoint. And we'll first have some housekeeping. The fiscal year 22 budget book is online. It's been on the website now for about two weeks. The website, as you know, www.southwestranches.org. We have hard copies here. We have two up here. We have a hard copy always available to the public at the front desk, should you come and need a hard copy. Tonight's PowerPoint presentation, I've circulated the PowerPoint. There's some to pick up in the back. I put some, just put some on the podium. And we have some up here, if you'd like your own personal copy, to take home with you tonight. So that takes care of the items for housekeeping. And we're going to move to, the first two items, as you will see, are proposed operating milled at 4.25%. Our proposed TIS door non-certex, which, how time flies, is our eighth fiscal year for TIS door non-certex. Those items will be covered in Agenda 12. 13 will be our initial fire assessment and 14 is our initial solid waste assessment. And as Town Administrator Andy Burns has indicated, all we're doing tonight is sending, setting rate maximums. With that in mind, next slide, details out our budget process, calendar events. This started back in February when we adopted the original calendar. We have a five-step process, one of which we're covering tonight, which is our prelim, as of July 29th, prelim milled, initial fire, solid waste assessment adoptions. The next four, three of which will have workshop or public hearing, so there's plenty of time to discuss, deliberate, meet, and make changes if you should decide. Our workshop is on Tuesday, August 17th at 7:00 PM. Monday, September 13th, because, which was mentioned, the conflict with Broward County and the school board, and our trim notice requirements for our non-ad valorem fire and solid waste requires, September 13th, Monday at 6:00 PM. It's an early start. The regular meeting starts at 7:30. So the public hearing will commence at 6:00 PM. It's our first public hearing for the tentative milled and budget adoption. Then we're going to cover the final fire protection and solid waste assessment adoption. We do our advertising between the 18th and the 21st. And then on Thursday, September 23rd at 6:00 PM, that will be our second public hearing for the final milled and budget adoption. Now, we provided a summary in our next slide. This is our comparison of our proposed rates and fees compared to the prior year. I'm not going to read the left because that's inexistent, but I will outline on the right column. Okay, you've got the heading on top now to the right. Proposed fiscal year 22 rates and fees. You'll see our operating milled at 4.25. Our TIS door milled is zero for next year. The total milled rate is 4.25 and as indicated in parentheses, the proposed initial rates are no change to our total milled rate. The fire assessment, there's a $135.30 increase. And our solid waste proposed no changes throughout all residential parcel lot sizes. And you will see in the later slides, we have six parcel lot sizes. This will be the third consecutive year of no change in solid waste rates. Moving to the milled component, I'd like to give the audience and everyone on video an ad valorem property tax introduction. Now, this is how your taxes are derived. And a market value is what someone would be willing to pay to purchase your property. And that is considered your assessed valuation and it is set every year by the Broward County Property Appraiser's Office. And it is an estimate as of January 1st. It is not as of July. It's not as of today. It goes backwards to January 1st for your assessed value. So you have your assessed valuation as determined by your Broward County Property Appraiser. Then you have exemptions. And there are a lot of exemptions. We've had Marty Care here, Broward County Property Appraiser. I encourage all the residents to seek discussion with the Broward County Property Appraiser and obtain all the exemptions you're entitled to. So after the exemptions, which includes your homestead, Save Our Homes exemption, leaves you with your taxable value. We take the taxable value, you times it by the taxable rate. That's what we determine tonight. And it comes up, and that is the tax levy for the Southwest Ranches portion. The next slide, we give you a five-year history and a six-year proposed. And the eagle is back. The eagle is back and it's soaring, straight across. The, we're proposing an eagle. You'll see, it's hard to tell, but they actually have SWR inscribed on the wings. Would you like that? And it shows you, we've been leveled, mostly leveled throughout the year. And just for curiosity, the ninth and the 20th, the 2019th and the 20th were years we had TIS door. And we did significant road surfacing and drainage improvements. So that caused the little blip up. But for next year, we're keeping the rates the same at 4.25. Now, here's an explanation of how we have a no change proposed in milled for next year. Primarily, we, on our one-on-ones, we listened to you for that, our discussions. And along with that, it's our current economic environment. Due to COVID-19 pandemic and alleged transitory inflation, primarily supports no change to the milled. We've had, number two is our growth in our new taxable value of almost 51 million. And that represents over 38% of our 8.54% in total townwide growth, which also is a new record for towns of Southwest Ranches. In the 21-year existence of Town of Southwest Ranches, 8.54% growth. Number three is our TIS door certex projects. Now, these projects, we have to separate the certex with the non-certex. The certex, they continue to be eligible for mobility advancement program awards. Therefore, it does not require funding primarily via milled for the upcoming fiscal year. Number four is our TIS door non-certex. We're proposing the utilization of existing committed fund balance in lieu of milled funding. That's the fourth reason of how we're able to keep no change in the town milled rate.
Hey Marty, before you move on, I just have a question. I don't know what alleged transitory inflation means.
Well, it just addresses the fact, a lot of people have been experiencing increases in groceries, gas, items, goods and services, and the alleged, what has been told to us that it is short-term in nature.
Okay, that's a transitory.
Transitory in nature. And the fact that, yes, we've had price increase, but we hope prices will come down. We can only hope prices come down. So there has been inflation and that's noted. Wage inflation, a big component, and goods and services component. Is that okay? We'll move on to number five.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five is, we've had a total reduction of the prior year's debt service provision, enable its appropriation within the general fund. Six is, as you all know and aware and have been approving this fiscal year, we've received significant grant funding obtained and it's proposed budgeted in the proposed budget, requiring minimal town matching required. And seven, we anticipate the continuance of a heightened building permitting zoning, which is non-ad valorem activity, which offsets our milled, ad valorem impact, which is a very good thing. Now, in our proposed budget, we're going to give you a list of items included, which you need to be aware. And the items in red and highlighted, the dollar amounts and their impact is included. I won't include the dollar amounts, but in red, you will note that the impact from the items in red do not have any milled impact. So our first item is our stormwater, these are program mods, and we have 12 program mods in total. Our stormwater master plan, no milled impact. A engineering inspector, a records and administrative coordinator, a transportation fund, TIS door plan update. Number five is the Rolling Oaks wetland improvement, no milled impact. That's our carryover as you have chose to proceed with in accordance with this budget. Where we will be doing the procurement and the bidding in next fiscal year. Number six is our townwide vehicle replacement program. Seven is our part-time customer service administrative assistant. The next is our 20th anniversary reboot celebration with no milled impact, carryover. Our comp plan update, that's a continuance of our comprehensive plan program. And the next page, we have our volunteer fire department safety equipment, which gives us 10, 11, 12, our fire apparatus replacement program, our fire hose replacement program, and our bunker gear replacement program. That covers our program mods. Next year, we're proposing seven capital improvement projects. And especially within the transportation area, they have multiple projects within the master projects, for you to be aware. Number one, with no milled impact, is our fire wells replacement and installation. The next is our fire safety apparatus protective warnings over at our fire, mobile fire station. Number three is our town hall complex safety drainage and mitigation improvements, no milled impact. Calusa Connaught Park improvements, no milled impact. Our Southwest Meadows Sanctuary Park has proposed no milled impact. And the final four, moving to our transportation projects, is our TIS door certex, no milled impacts, drainage improvement projects, non-certex, surface and drainage ongoing rehab. That's our TIS door non-certex, no milled impact. And our pavement striping and marking for safety, no milled impact. Just as a recap, as it relates to the milled, the total proposed for operating and TIS door purposes, 4.25 mils, represents no change in milled and a $50 increase per 250,000 of taxable value, which covers funding for some new and ongoing program mods, as well as critical capital improvement projects, which we previously outlined. The important thing to emphasize is that all residents that have eligible Save Our Homes exemption property owners, the change in their net taxable value will not exceed 1.4%. The last slide is the recap. This is also all outlined in our proposed budget book. It's the recap with the number of votes required. And what's highlighted in blue represents our proposed and our prior year adopted at 4.25%. And with, along with that, reflects our rollback rate, which is our 4.0504. And then I'll just point out our maximum majority vote. All the votes required tonight, it requires only three out of five, is 4.7327. And that's all I have as it relates to the milled. I'll turn it back to the mayor and the council for any questions or comments. And then voting on adopting our agenda item number 12, which is our not to exceed preliminary milled rate. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Marty. Great presentation. All right. Any comments from the council on that presentation?
Just, just a short little comment.
Is your mic on?
A little question. Is it on? Hello?
There you go, it is.
Right. I just wasn't close enough. Thanks. Marty, the Save Our Homes exemption, that the net taxable value went out to 1.4%, that's statutory, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It enables up to.
3%?
Enables 3%, but as of January, it was calculated statutory at lower at 1.4%.
That's my little question. Thanks.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, sure. Just a couple of quick comments. The numbers you're seeing here tonight are basically our commitment to not raise your taxes this year. We are putting these numbers in as the highest possible that the town would tax the community for. I'm not going to suggest we're going to go down from here. I think our numbers will stick where they are. The only one that has an opportunity to go any lower is the fire fees based on what Councilmember Jablonski was talking about. So it's good news. There's a process we go through with the administration where they present all of the budget needs. They also talk about the things that are nice to have and like to have. And we also bring things back as well. And I'm very proud to work with a group of people that are holding the line. And we've been doing that for a couple of years now. So nobody's going out and coming up with some great ideas on how to spend your money. I mean, we're doing what it takes to keep town running without raising taxes. If you remember me screaming before I was on the council, to me, the most important thing was to keep our town affordable because my birthday tomorrow, I turn 63. I look at a few people around here with a little more white hair than I have, and I'll be there soon. Yeah, yeah. So this is to keep everybody safe. I hope to be there.
Yeah, I hope I may.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Thank you.
Motion's on the table.
Okay. I did want to.
One thing, Mayor, can, we'll need the town clerk to read the resolution.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Great idea.
Thanks.
I was going to wait for the second, but if you'd like, we'll do it now.
I'll second it.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, setting the proposed millage rate and current rollback rate pursuant to section 200.065 Florida statutes and establishing the date, time, and place at which public hearings will be held to consider the proposed millage rate, excuse me, and the tentative budget for fiscal year 2022. Directing the town clerk to file set resolution with the property appraiser of Broward County pursuant to the requirements of Florida statutes and the rules and regulations of the Department of Revenue for the state of Florida. Directing that a certified copy of this resolution be sent to the Broward County property appraiser and tax collector and providing an effective date. Do you have the motion in session?
All right, all right. I did want to make a couple of comments. One is, Marty, great job to you and your staff. Definitely, this is a team sport, but really appreciate the leadership there. And I want, I need to give a shout out to Rod and Emily over there. If you saw on this item after item after item with that red print that said, "No millage impact, no millage impact, no millage impact", it's because we have some great individuals that work very hard to get us grants and find other ways to find funding, so it doesn't come out of our millage. So actually, I... Without their efforts, I can guarantee you our taxes would be going up. So thank you for all you, all you, all you do. All right, any other, any other comments?
Well, I got more after the motion.
We did, we did.
Yes, I second.
On motion, I second it.
Yeah, 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 go for it.
No, I just wanted to thank the staff like you just did.
Okay.
What an outstanding job they're doing. You know, it's, when you go through all of this, and I don't think people realize the time put in, it is just astronomical. It's, and when they go home, they're constantly thinking of new ways to make things work. So, you know, we've got a really good team. And I just wanted to keep it short like that.
Thank you. All right, any public comment on this item?
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I'd just like to say thank you for all the reading material that I have.
Yeah, yeah.
I can go to sleep, but no problem falling asleep now. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sorry Jim, didn't mean to. All right, is there any public comment on this item? I see none. Russell, if you could please qualify.
Councilmember Albridge?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kazinsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bracken?
Yes.
Motion passed. Mayor, would you like me to read item 13 before they proceed? Would you like me to read item 13?
Yeah, that'd be a great idea. Why not? Let's do something wild and great.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, providing findings, amending in part, resolution 2011-084 by providing a new section three, purpose and definitions incorporating the 2021 fire protection assessment report, approving preliminary fire protection assessment rates relating to the provision of fire protection services, facilities, and programs in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, providing for the imposition and computation of fire protection assessments, providing for exemption for veterans with service-connected total and permanent disability, providing for legislative determinations of special benefit and fair apportionment, establishing the preliminary rates of assessment, directing the preparation of a preliminary assessment roll, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of mailed and published notice thereof and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All yours, Marty.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, council. Once again, we're moving to the agenda item number 13, which is establish the proposed initial not to exceed fire protection assessment rate for next year. Before I start, I would like the council to be aware that we have our fire assessment methodology consultant in the audience in attendance tonight, Chris Wallace of Munilitics, whom will be available to answer any questions if needed later. Up on our slide now, the fire assessment. This assessment is permitted per Florida statutes, chapters 166.021 and 166.041, and is adopted by Town Ordinance 2001-09. Our ordinance 2001-09 requires that the annual rate be established every year. Resolution 2020-045 adopted a fire assessment methodology impacting all categories due to allocable fire protection costs from the most recent five years' rolling average of response data. The proposed resolution tonight will establish a new 2021 fire protection methodology, combining or blending the commercial, institutional, warehouse, and industrial categories. We have nine homesteaded properties owned by total and permanent service-connected disabled U.S. veterans that are proposed to be exempted tonight to town council. The town impact resulting from adopting this 100% tax exemption is absorbed within the general fund, and that would be $6,880. The initial resolution is needed tonight for the assessment to comply with our Florida statutes and for use in our TRIM notices distributed by the Broward County Property Appraisers in August. What we did is we provided by rates, by categories, a three-year history in the proposed fiscal year 2022. You will see, moving across the line, the top is our residential rate from $629.14 to $764.44. The acreage is 84.76 to $84.15, and that is based on acres. The next slide gives you a three-year history with the proposed blended. You will see the various rates from the prior year and how they all get smoothed combined into, as proposed, .9211 per building square footage. In this slide, this is a new slide because we have a new methodology in place, we provided the changes in our call distribution fiscal year 2021 versus 2022. And what I've done is, you will see, we've highlighted the residential other category, where you will see the rolling average and why the impact for the major increase. All the other categories had declines in the rolling average. The residential had a 16.42% increase. Now, as it relates to all the categories on the impact to the fire assessment, our residential has $135.30 increase per dwelling unit, and this increase, proposed rate, is primarily the result of increased fire protection response and utilization, as shown in the previous slide. Our acreage, as proposed, is a 61 cent decrease per acre. And our new combined 2021 methodology, now going to be known as combined non-residential, the commercial will show a 20 point, or .2055 decrease per square foot building area. The institution will have a .2895 decrease per square foot building area. And our warehouse industrial has a .37394, that's .3794 increase per square foot building area. That's all we have as it relates to the fire assessment. I'd like to turn it back to the floor and the mayor and council for any questions or comments, and then vote from town council on adopting the agenda item, setting the proposed not to exceed initial fire assessment rates. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Marty. I'll just say a couple introductory comments, and then I want to hear what Gary has to say. But this is obviously not where we want to be with this fire assessment going up. It is something that, you know, I personally have been working on, really since the day I came into office in November, looking at the numbers and trying to ensure that this was, you know, we were looking at all the different avenues. The biggest factor in this increase is the fact that many more calls this past year came from residential units than it did from commercial or other areas. And so when we look at how then the next year, the dollars, the funding is allocated, it's based on where the calls were the prior year. And so that accounts for a huge jump in here. Basically, people spent the year at home, so that's where the calls came from, was at home. And so it's, this is unfortunate. I'm hoping that this is a, that we will see this not repeat next year because as hopefully, you know, people are getting back to working in other areas and not being home as much, we'll start to see this begin to work back to the way it's historically been. But this is a tough year. It's not where I don't think any of us want it to be. I know it's not where any of us want it to be. But I've spent a lot of time with Chris, spent a lot of time with Marty. And I know we have rehashed these numbers many different ways, looking for options. So I'm very intrigued by what council member Jablonski is going to bring to the council this evening, because I have no idea what it is, so.
It's not for this evening, it's for the budget workshop in August.
Oh.
You're going to leave it hanging?
Yeah, well, no, I said that upfront. I mean, it wasn't for tonight, where Andy and I are still fleshing out the details.
Okay, all right.
I apologize if there was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, I second that. All right, well, I mean, it's good to hear that there's something in the works, because it's difficult.
Yeah, we just need time to work the numbers.
Okay, the one thing, the last thing I wanted to say about this is I just wanted to encourage everybody, as I said, I have spent a lot of time on this. I've looked at a lot of different variations, trying to make sure that what has happened in the past, where there's been little pockets of areas where the assessment went way up and people, really, I didn't, you know, was very uncomfortable with the amounts. We spent time trying to make sure that that did not happen this year. But we can't look at everything and everybody. So I'm just encouraging folks that when you get your tax TRIM notice, that you look at it, and please let us know as soon as you possibly can. If you see something there that looks like it jumped and it shouldn't be where it should be, the sooner we know about that, the sooner we can correct it, and the easier it is to make those corrections. If it's, you know, if we get to the, you know, the end of September and then it comes up, it's, then, you know, the water's kind of under the bridge, so it's a lot tougher. So I just, that's my last comment, is just please, please let us know as soon as you possibly can if you see something there that just does not look right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? I agree with you on with the issues with the increased calls over the last year. I, I'm hoping that it's an anomaly, as frequently reported, attributed to the COVID-19, that once our residents are back in their work environments, that these calls can reduce. But I'm looking at, one of the questions I had is when we have the exemption for the fire fee for the disabled veterans. One of my concerns is, would that extend to a surviving spouse? Because that's a, that's a big concern to me, that that would be extended to a surviving spouse when an unfortunate time does come. Just a concern of mine, as I was reading.
Any other?
Yeah, just one comment regarding next year. I mean, we waited 10 years before we did a fire study, and that's probably addressed some of the pretty large swings.
Yeah.
We're talking about next year, we probably wouldn't do another fire study for five years. Are we talking about possibly doing a true-up of this next year? So I'm not sure if we budgeted for that.
I'm not, I'm not aware of doing, planning to do another fire study in the next couple of years. I think, as you mentioned, you know, five to six years is what I think is normal. And so we're probably three or four years away from doing that.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, if I felt like that by doing it, we would somehow resolve this issue, then I would be all for it, and I would, there's no reason to have to wait five or six years. And I, and I'm, you know, I'm open to other comments. But my, from what I've seen, I personally don't think that's going to, I think it's going to kind of...
Well, again, if the calls are redistributed based on changes in people's lifestyle due to COVID going away at some point, then those, you've been over the report 100 times, so you understand how it works.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think it's something worthy of keeping an eye on to see, maybe we can get feedback from the fire department on what's going on out there.
Yeah.
If it costs us some money to redistribute properly and people get, it goes in the other direction.
Right.
That's a fair way to do it.
Right. At the end of the day, what this study does is, you know, we've got X number of dollars that we have to pay for our fire service, okay? So that's a set number that we determine based on our contracts and based on everything we have. This is how much money we've got to spend on fire. What the study does is it determines what is fair for allocating that money out to the different types of properties that we have in town. Residential, commercial, uses, thank you, that's a better way to call it, in town. And so, so at the end of the day, what we're talking about is moving the money between those different uses as opposed to somehow having the whole amount drop. It can't. We, we have to pay for the services that we, that we need as a town. So, so in this year, as I mentioned, you know, with COVID and everything, much more of the calls were from residential, and we're seeing that reflected. That that's, that then becomes the new fair way of allocating the cost because the costs are allocated based on usage.
Right.
It's not based on any, you know, it has to, that's, that is the most fair way to do it. Those folks, those uses that use it the most then are allocated the most of the cost.
And it's right up there in the numbers that Marty has up right now. I mean, acreage, I'm not sure the impact there, but on commercial, if less people are going to Kino Fuzzles. During the pandemic, we know a lot of those stores were closed.
Right.
And then with the institutional, most of the schools were closed and a lot of the religious institutions were closed. So the numbers skewed residential because we were all home.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes.
Just a few quick points. First of all, I want to thank you for your involvement in this process. It has been months long, and it does feel like we began it back in November following the election. Second is, what nobody said today, but I'm delighted to see that the barn issue that we've had the last few years has been resolved. And that was not an issue this year, so I'm pleased to acknowledge that. And just to further tease council member Jablonski's concept that we're fleshing out, I do want to let you know that I did have a discussion with Marty on that, and he did not have a stroke.
Really?
Thank you, Mayor.
I really need to press this, I can tell.
Great, all right.
Steve, real quick, you know, there's been so much talk about doing away with the volunteer fire department, doing away with all the other, the cost that you talked about for our volunteer fire department, Davy's Fire Department, the cost to have our own department would be so astronomical to the people who kill us if we assess them the amount to pay for that, for the fire fee. Like you said, if everything had to be paid for, the fire had to be paid for by a separate fee, that number would just be astronomical. I looked at the booklet that Andy gave me, the study that was done, and I read through it. And I'm really glad that we do have the volunteer fire department at the cost that we have. And I know in negotiating the contract with Davy's Fire Department, or maybe Pembroke Pine Fire Department might save a little money, but I don't think getting rid of the volunteer fire department would do anything, would hurt us. volunteer fire department would do anything, would hurt us, you know, what the cost that is, yeah.
I agree a hundred percent. Thank you for saying that. Alright, any further comments from the council? Alright, let me open it up to the public, public comments.
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue. I find that, just looking at the numbers of fire calls by fire rate category, that there were 316 fires, or fire calls, last year. I find that to be an extraordinarily unusual number for the simple reason that if we went through it, call by call, I'll bet you 300 of them were actually EMS calls, not fire calls. The combined non-residential, which is probably the ones for the traffic accidents out on US 27, which every weekend, we've got two or three calls out there. 140 that I can see sending a fire truck to because it's an auto accident, probably have gasoline on the direct. Acreage 24, possibly. Governmental 4. When was the four times this building caught on fire last year? Or one of the parks caught on fire last year? Gee, I don't think anyone did. Can anyone tell me what four government properties that we own in town caught on fire? I'd like to know. When's the date? Because I never heard anything about it, not from this council, not from any resident, not from anybody. So 316 times, someone called up and said, "My house is on fire." Now, it didn't happen. I'll bet you they were EMS. And if that's the case, 911 is at fault and needs to be corrected. That's where we gotta look. Not at the number where it gets logged, this hash mark in this column. So let's put it in the correct column, because if 911 is screwing up, let's get them corrected. Thank you.
Can I just ask Marty a question? Oh, yeah, sure. Any further public comment?
Michelle McBride, 13851 East Palomino. I know this has taken you a lot of time, I appreciate all the effort. Just a point of clarification, Marty, you were showing on your PowerPoint about the five-year average, I believe, and I don't understand why now you're not averaging the fire fees over several years, and it, you know, so maybe if you could just explain that, because that's confusing to me. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, so I've heard two questions. One was the process for determining whether it's a fire or an EMS, and then you can speak to the the averaging, five-year averaging.
Certainly. In terms of the data, I just would like to call in the expert, Chris Wallace here, to address the data, to ensure that we're utilizing fire protection response to clarify that. The average, I could let you realize, within the columns, it's actually, utilizing a five-year average, you drop off the oldest year, thank you, it's up on the screen right now, and you will see in the column, the five-year rolling average, you'll see from 2015 to 19, that's five years, and then the next year, which is, it's calendar year, not fiscal year, calendar year for the data, is 2016 to 20. So you drop off 15, you add 20, and that eliminates fluctuations in its entirety. That was the whole purpose of sticking with the five-year rather than a one-year or a three-year, per your direction, council direction. And with the data and insurance, I'd like to call Chris Wallace to explain that to the audience.
Good evening, Chris Wallace.
Hello, Chris.
Good evening. 7320 Griffin Road, Suite 102 in Davie, right down the road. And yes, it's been a challenge the last few months, but I think it's it's turned out well. To get to the data and to follow up on what Marty said, we only look at fire data. So we get all the calls for service from BSO, or really from the town of Davie, and we strip out calls that do not benefit property, and then you can generally refer to those as fire calls, but you could also have other calls that aren't necessarily fire calls that could involve a benefit to the property, like leaky fire hydrants, or leaky fire systems or whatever. So you don't actually have to have a fire to be called a fire call, it may in fact be a call-out because your smoke alarm went off, or some other reason, so it could be a false alarm, a false call-out. So we do strip out EMS calls. We also did not include, although we legally could, basic life support calls, which would occur on a fire apparatus that would not involve advanced life support. The courts certainly would allow you to do basic life support, but I only look at fire apparatus, and that would be kind of an incidental in my way of thinking. So even that would be reducing the number of calls. And you're looking over a five-year period, and as Marty said, we're stripping off the oldest year every year and adding to it at the end of the year. So one of the things that was mentioned earlier is maybe you had an anomaly this year, but when we look at this again next year, while we're not going to be doing a full-fledged fire assessment, we did the proposal that Marty had put together when the RFP went out, is every year, if the city so wants, for really not that much extra money, I don't think it's like maybe not even $1,500, $2,000, we look at the call data again and rerun it. So you're really only going to be picking up 20% of each year's call data, more or less. So, yeah, we do strip out EMS calls because the courts aren't going to allow you to assess for them, because they do not benefit property. To have a special assessment, you have to have a benefit to the property, a special benefit to the property, and the costs have to be fairly apportioned, which is why we're here tonight or throughout this process. So hopefully that answers the question. You know, the data's available, if you want to know what those four calls, any property or to any property are, we certainly have that. But it would be a call-out to a governmental property for some reason, maybe someone pulled a fire alarm and the fire department just goes out. Maybe someone had a small fire in a in a car that was parked at a park, and we would consider that that was a governmental property, we consider that a fire call, even though it's in a parking lot, that parking lot belongs to the park, for instance, and so that that piece of property would pick up that call. And I'm I'm going just in general terms, I honestly don't remember any particular call for service, just in generalities, but we could certainly provide that to you or anyone else.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Alright. Alright, so, waiting a minute here. I think we're, any any further comment before we take the roll on this? Alright, I think we're, I think we're good, Russell. Councilmember Algren?
I'm sorry, yes.
Councilmember Jabonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Chris, thank you for spending a year with us.
Right? My pleasure. Alright, item number 14. Let me read that in the right place.
Senator Mayor, it's a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, related to the provision of solid waste services, facilities, and programs to residential properties in the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida. Providing authority for solid waste services, assessments, providing purpose and definitions, providing findings, incorporating the solid waste special assessment methodology report, directing the preparation of an assessment role, providing for a 50% exemption of four veterans, service-connected, total, and permanent disability, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof, and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Sir.
Alright, Marty.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council, once again, thank you. We're moving to agenda number 14, which we're establishing our initial solid waste assessment rates for fiscal year 2122. These are permitted by Florida Statute Chapters 197.3632. The annual rate establishment was required by our Town Ordinance 2002-08. The only residential parcels proposed to be 50% exempted to Town Council tonight are nine homesteaded properties owned by total and permanent service-connected disabled U.S. veterans. The town impact resulting from this 50% tax exempting is approximately $3,239, and it's absorbed within the general fund. We need this initial resolution tonight to comply with Florida statutes and for use in our truth in millage notices distributed by the Broward County Property Praiser's Office during August. Our next slide is our proposed rates, which you will see in the far right column, has no change, no increase, no decrease throughout all seven, six, excuse me, six tranch parcels. And tranch A, I'll just give you a min-max that we indicated before. The assessment A, which is just shy of one acre, a lot square foot range of 41,200, is proposed, stable, no change, at $593.01. Up to number F, tranch, F of about two and a half acres and above, that's 107,000 lot square footage range, and that is stable, no change, at $879.74. The solid waste impact for fiscal year 2022 would proudly propose no change in all residential categories. This occurred due to our successful management and legal negotiations, obtaining a permanently reduced bulk disposal maximum generation factor from 4.67 to 3.73 tons per unit in the prior year, and a fixed contractual residential disposal rate, while the variable components, which comprise the annual contract element adjustments consisting of both CPI and fuel indices primarily offset each other. It also retains and reflects Town Council policy of full cost recovery with no rate subsidy. Finally, it is important to note that the proposed fiscal year 22 rate for all ranges averaged higher than all the property rate ranges retroactive from 2012 by an overall average of less than 8%. So, the 10-year average is actually less than 1% per year over the past 10 years, in terms of stability in rates in accordance with our negotiated contract. At this time, I'm turning it back to council for, and mayor, excuse me, for any discussion comments, and then voting to set the initial solid waste assessment rate. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Marty. Any comments from the council?
I have a question.
Yes.
And this to Marty. And I apologize upfront if I missed this earlier, I'm having a hard time hearing tonight. In the column, if you can go back to the columns on the bulk trash or the various, I'm not sure what you call them, categories, tranches, whatever, and the solid waste cost per unit, the $322.86, which everybody pays, is that, is that the same, is that comparable number to what we were shown from Palm Beach about, earlier in that presentation, where it said 172, 173?
I don't have the details, unfortunately, of that exact.
No, but I mean, are we, are we comparing, am I comparing apples to apples?
No.
I don't believe so, no.
That that number was just the tipping fee.
The 172?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is both the collection and the tipping fee.
Got it, that's what I'm saying, I was having a hard time with that one.
That is correct. It's combined, and they segregated out.
Yes.
It's not apples to apples.
Yeah, and as long as we're on solid waste, so from general comments with the, with the presentation that was done earlier, in order for us to move forward, in my mind, and this is only a suggestion at this point, is we need to take what we've got right here and compare that bottom line to what they're offering, and project it out over five, 10 years, you know, where it 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 makes sense where even, you know, somebody as slow as me can figure it out.
Right.
You know, it's a, it's either a good move or a bad move for us, one or the two.
It may be a bit of a challenge too, though, because it's really two components to the cost, tipping fee and then, of course, the truck and labor, right?
Right.
I don't know if we have visibility into the numbers right now. Actually, we have, we know our tipping fee, we.
Yeah, we have our number.
We know that, so we can calculate, we can work backward.
Yeah, but I, but I would think if they're, well, today, today was basically a sales job.
Of course.
And if they wouldn't sell us the product or the service or whatever, they're going to have to be forthcoming with a lot more data and detail that we can compare up against this.
Agreed.
You know, because we, you know, I mean, I'm kind of stating the obvious, but I want the general public, no, this, you know, we're not taking anything on face value, you know, so, in order for us to move forward, or to move forward with what they're presenting, because, you know, we need to look at it, and if there's significant savings to the residents, we want to, we want to jump on that, you know, as far as that's what I'm feeling.
Russell, you are representative to the, to that board, to the government, Solid Waste Board?
No, actually, I believe it's Sandy Luongo was appointed at some point, I'm not sure if there's been any meeting.
I've been the alternate Vice Mayor, staying very active with the solid waste program, and Rod and Emily as well, assumed.
Great.
The background. Another thing I wanted to mention, this is our last year with our current contract, and we're still, Andy, Russell, under negotiation for renewal for next year. So that plays a factor, obviously, as moving forward after this year.
Yeah. Marty, a question. In negotiation with other, with other companies, has there been any decrease in the cost, or has it been pretty stable across the board, everybody charging about the same thing?
The the other contracts have a variable disposal rate. We have a lock-in on fixed disposal rate with generation and with tonnage. That plays a tremendous favorable rate for us. It's yet to be seen what's going to happen next year with whether, through negotiation and potentially ITB, RFP, to see how that, based on responses. So the urgency with the solid waste study right now is a large portion of municipalities are all expiring within the next year or two. So that is, plays a significant bearing, which means everybody's is going to change. And it's the, that's the whole reason the solid waste study has been pursued in this manner, before the other municipalities agree to and enter into long-term contracts with their carriers. But we'll get more information and keep your breast as as we hear from them. That's why they're doing a waste generation study. They're not doing an individual city by city, they're doing a county-wide residential study, which I would hope will include and we can compare to our tonnage data to get, to play a factor in how the impact will be. To be continued.
Yeah, I know a lot of people are not happy with our.
Yeah, I know a lot of people are not happy with our current provider, and I was just wondering if in negotiations, you know, if someone else was cheaper, would, would it benefit us to go with them? But like you said, with the rate being variable, I'm not real sure that's a good idea. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I, you know, I actually had comments along those lines as well, some contract issues and things you can go to for the automatic pickup, things like that, that, but we'll, there'll be another night to go through that stuff. Suffice it to say that we have some work to do there. All right. Any other council comments? Any public comments on this item?
As to the rates being the same, I did not expect them to change. As to the service, which was mentioned a minute ago, I'd like to give you one more little thing that, taking a look at the Times, one ninety-ninth has not gotten garbage picked up. Interesting part is probably the same for Bob Street, because we're the next one after them. If there's a pickup date, when there's a council meeting the next night, there are always pickup. Every time they miss, it's on a week, there is not a council meeting. Every last time since January of this year. I went back and took a look at it. Last week, they didn't pick up on a hundred ninety-nine. This week, beautiful. We had a council meeting tonight. Little strange, incidental, and I'm sure it was had to do with the phase of the moon and nothing else. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none. Any other council comments? Russell, please call.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Okay, item number fifteen.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, extending a zoning in progress approved pursuant to resolution number twenty-two-one dash zero thirty-two to further regulate any new commercial nursery, expansion of an existing commercial nursery, or storage or growth of any plant material in containers. Extending the zoning in progress for a period of time not to exceed ninety days or until the town's revised regulations have been adopted, whichever is sooner, provided for conflict, provided for separability, and provided for effective date.
Great. Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Sa'vi. Thank you. I want to make some, just some introductory comments on this one. So, we, the nursery ordinance, obviously, was something that the Comp Plan Board spent a lot of time working on, really appreciated their, their work, their adjustments, and the discussion that was associated with it, a ton of work there. And, and coming, coming out of that, there was still areas of it that I don't think was, were settled. There was one piece of the ordinance, section four point three, that really is the heart of the issue with what this zoning in progress is dealing with, and that is non-agricultural, commercial businesses that are opening up in residential areas. Not, we're not talking about ag businesses. We're talking about non-ag, commercial businesses that often are called nurseries, because they sell things that may be nursery-related, like mulch and things like that, but they are not true nurseries. If they were, they would be getting their ag, and they wouldn't be covered by this anyway. So, so, listening to what the Comp Board had said, there is a ton of stuff in that whole nursery ordinance, as we call it, that is not integral to what the true heart of the issue is with this. So, I, I was working with, with Jeff Cadens and Andy, and went through and reworked four point three. And I pulled out anything that had to do with ag, like there was a section in there that, you know, a wholesale nursery couldn't be over two and a half acres, made no sense to me. Anyway, anything that had to do with ag like that, I pulled it out. It's not in there anymore. The only thing that's left in there is just these non-ag, commercial businesses. And it's saying, basically, those types of businesses can only be on the arterial roads. Griffin, Dykes, I'm not even sure Dykes is on there, but I don't, I think Sheridan is on there. But it's only those arterial roads is the only place that those non-ag businesses can be. So, it stays out of the, as the residential neighborhoods. People that live in those residential neighborhoods, like myself, you know. I want to be able to endure, enjoy the rural lifestyle. I don't want a small Home Depot to open up next door to me, you know. And in talking to a lot of the nursery folks, and I've spoken to a lot of them, the feedback I've gotten is that, you know, they, they, these types of businesses give real, true ag businesses a bad name, you know, because they get lumped in with true ag. And, and people start having, you know, negative feelings towards true ag because they've got this mini Home Depot that, that's trying to move in next to them. So, so that's what this is about now. It's much, much smaller. It's much more compact than you've ever seen it before, because it's just that one issue. And it's making sure that we resolve that one issue that will be, that's associated with the zoning in progress, which is why we just need, this, this is going to come forth on the second meeting in August for our first vote, and then in September for the second vote. So, that's why we need the extra ninety days to get this resolved and put to bed. And then zoning in progress can go away, and, and I believe that this is something that, frankly, we can all get behind. A lot of the other stuff that's controversial about the nursery is not included in what we, what you're going to see coming towards you. It's not, it's not going to be there. There was no reason to, to bring it in, and we've got a specific problem that we've got to resolve. This is going to resolve it. It's very compact. I'm looking forward to it. I just finished it up with, with Jeff just yesterday morning. So, it's, it's hot off the presses. It's got to go through the legal and everything to make sure that, you know, it is, it's, it says, has all the legal wording that it requires, but, but the content is done. So, I'm looking forward to having that published out there so that the residents and the council can see it. And, and, you know, if it needs to be tweaked, which it might, you know, we always get great resident input. And if, if I miss something, which is always possible, and if it needs to be tweaked that, you know, that second meeting in August, then I'm certainly, I want, I want it to go outright, and so we're open to that. But I think, I think you'll be pleased with what you see, because it's very succinct, and it, it, it solves the problem that we're dealing with, so. And nothing more, nothing else is thrown in there, so I think it'll be good.
Sounds like a good plan, Mayor.
Yep. Thank you for the leadership.
Thanks.
Long time coming. Thank you.
I'm looking forward to it. All right. Any comments on the zoning in progress? Seeing none. Any com, any public comment on the zoning in progress? Seeing none. Russell, if you could please call.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Auburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
All right. Item number sixteen.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, enacting a zoning in progress pursuant to section zero zero five dash two forty of the town's Unified Land Development Code, directing town staff to defer the acceptance and processing of waiver of plat applications, authorizing and directing the study and review of the town subdivision procedures, providing that the acceptance and processing of waiver of plat applications shall be deferred for a period of time not to exceed one hundred and eighty days or until the town council considers amended land development regulations, whichever occurs first, provided for, so I'm sorry, provided for conflict, provided for separability, and provided an effective date.
Great. Thank you, Russell.
Motion to approve.
Sa'vi.
Any comments on this?
No, I think this is good. This, this buys us some time to start looking at it. We saw a perfect example of it tonight, with the two quasi-judicials. Fortunately, we were able to stop further subdivisions. You know, this, this is, this is to keep us rural. This is to keep the open space and, and, you know, orderly and.
Any other comments from the council on this?
We are going to see more and more subdivisions. You know, as if, people that own the property get older, and they've got ten acres or so, it's harder to take care of that ten acres. So, this, I think, will help us, so that they can't chop it up real bad. I think this is great. Thank you.
All right. I have a different take on this, so I want to share this. Here, so, little history. So, we used to, everything used to need to go through the county, their normal plating process. Take about a year, cost whatever it is, ten thousand dollars, five thousand dollars. It was expensive. Back in the early two thousands, there were, you know, mom and pops that were pioneers here, folks that had been here a long time. And we created this waiver of plat so that they could divide up their property for exactly like what we saw this evening, giving a piece of it so that their family could continue to live on that property with them. I think that's who we are. I think that's a big part of who we are, is passing on our rural lifestyle to our kids. It's a legacy. And what I'm afraid of, I, I applaud what you're trying to do. I'm just not sure that this is the right way to do it. Because what this is going to do, and we've already got a resident that didn't know this was coming, obviously, and I got an email about a week ago saying, Steve, we've lived here thirty years. We finally ready to divide up the property for our kids, and now this is going away? We can't do it? I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable taking away those property rights. But what I'm really not comfortable with is, I think tonight was a great example. If this had gone to Broward County, let me tell you what I think probably would have happened. It would have taken them longer to do it, yes, but would it have happened? Yes, it would have happened. Would we have gotten, Councilmember Jablonsky, you did an amazing job tonight. You really did. Would we have gotten them to be able to commit and get the commitment there for them to not subdivide that property again?
No way.
No way. The need restriction would not have been there. It would have gone through, and they would have gotten their property divided. They still would have had seven plus acres sitting there, and they could have divided it up once, maybe two more times. That can't happen now. Why? Because it came to us, because we looked at it, because we had folks like Councilman Jablonsky that saw it and fixed the problem, and it's never going to be a problem again. If that went to Broward County, that would not have happened.
Doesn't have to come to us also.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up too.
Yeah.
We need a final.
I was told that the, the plating process comes to, comes to us also. And maybe I'm mistaken. I got this from.
I believe that's my understanding as well.
Yeah.
Even, even if that, even if that does happen, what have we done? We've created something where our residents need to go through this process and pay that extra money, and delay them a year. For what? Just to punish them? I, I, you know, I know that's not, I know that's not the intent, but that's the result.
Yeah.
That's the result. They, what we're, what we're trying to resolve, which I agree a hundred percent, is when a developer comes in there and is trying to turn, turn it from open space into something else. So, and I totally support that. So, if we can, you know, I'm going to vote for this, because if we can come up with a solution that will protect those properties from developers, but still allow our longtime residents to pass on the legacy to their kids, I'm all for it.
So, I had a conversation with Jeff after the last council meeting. There were a number of things that we brought up on this topic that I wasn't that clear on. And what he suggested is, is, I, I think, kind of the direction you're going. For a lot of five acres or less or something, you know, we put a number on it, the waiver of plat process for a mom and pop type situation is just fine. It's, if somebody comes in and they've got a ten-acre lot and they want to divide it up, you know what? There's a lot of work that needs to go into that. Maybe, I don't know if that's the right threshold, ten acres or twenty acres or what it really needs to be, but a developer coming in here's got to follow the letter of the law. And then we still need to have the opportunity to, to make modifications and fine tune whatever their plan is. So, maybe, maybe the way to address, to keep, keep our residents whole is to put a, to put a number on the size, and if you're on one side of that number, you've got to conform.
Yep. I mean, we've got a problem, and I applaud that.
Yeah, I, 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 the whole intent was to help families, and that's been subverted now, where developers are coming in, they're buying and splitting lots, and, you know, or second or third generation that are out of state, and they just want to dump the property.
Right.
You know, it's not people that are investing in the community.
Right.
You know, this, this is an easy ticket to make, to make a quick buck, when we found out that, you know, people are doing. And not everybody's doing it, of course, of course not. And some people are getting caught on, on the short side of this.
Right.
And I, that's, that's, that's a tragedy. That's not, that's not what we're trying to do. And, and I agree with you a hundred percent. It, how do we, but how do we fix it? You know, that's, that's the key question. How we fix it? You know, it was like we were looking at the, what was it, solid waste, the acreage going down. And the acreage is going down because people are building and buying on, on the open space, okay? I mean, that's, you know, the short answer, you know, but they're, they're creating more and more acreage by splitting up the larger properties. And, and, you know, we're, we're totally for the family farm and the family, you know, compound, whatever, however you want to phrase it. You know, what, what I'm concerned with is the ten-acre, the eight-acre, depending if it's rural estates or, you know, and, and that gets chopped. I mean, we've got huge qua, huge quantity over on Sheridan and Flamingo. You know, how does that get divided up? You know, that's going to go through the plating process and all that. But we have all these other open areas, and they're not going to be open very much longer. I don't think the right things are going.
Yeah. I have a question for Richard, actually. Richard, I know Florida's got great property laws that, that really protect us. Are we able to come up with a scenario where if you're a resident of the town and you want to do subdivision work of your property, split it up for your two kids, three kids, whatever that is, versus somebody who is essentially, I don't want to call them a land speculator, maybe they own the land for a few years, but they don't live in town. They, they have no, you know, no roots here in town. Can we discriminate that way, or is that discrimination by Florida law?
No, you can't discriminate. You've got to look at every application on its face and treat everyone the same way when it comes in.
So, the fact that they're a resident has no bearing?
Well, I mean, you as a body, you're going to take everything into consideration, but you're going to have to look at the application, look at the details, look at what they're trying to do. Does it, does it comport with Florida law, or does it comport with our ordinances, with county ordinances? So, we've got to look at the whole picture. And you as a body will look at the whole picture too.
Sure, sure.
But we can't discriminate versus developer versus.
Okay.
Resident family.
Okay. Try.
Yeah, I know. I mean, this, this is a real problem, and we've got work to do. I, I just, I just wanted, I didn't want any surprises, so I want to express now that, that if we, if we're going to end up hurting the folks that have been here.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to hurt the people.
I, I'm, I can't vote for that. I can't vote for that.
I hear you.
As people would say right now.
Steve, how will this one hundred and eighty days not hurt the people if we don't take applications for one hundred and eighty days? How would that not hurt them? I think it will hurt them, like you were talking about. So, I mean, what good would it do to pass this now if the way you feel is that we're going to hurt the residents? What we want to do is stop the developers. I understand that. But to do that, you know, I don't know how to.
Well, so, my, my feeling on it is, yes, it will, and that was why I got that email, frankly, and maybe some of you got. Well, so I I my my feeling on it is, yes, it will. And that was why I got that email, frankly. Um, and maybe some of you got the same email. But uh, but that was why I got that email, was because they were ready to start on their project, literally. And what what's this? So um, so it will hurt them, but it's it is it is a real issue for our town. To me, I don't I don't obviously, my I'm expressing that I don't want to hurt them. But if we do this for a short period of time to figure out the problem and get a a permanent solution in place that will last for decades to come, then that then a hundred and eighty days, I can live with that.
Okay.
But but if it's if it leads to something where that becomes like a permanent solution, I I can't support that.
We need uh, six months. Something a hundred and eighty days is six months.
Yeah, I don't know.
Do we think we need that much time?
Well, we got the holidays coming by.
And Mayor, I was just gonna jump in real quick to piggyback of what you said. Again, you're not voting on the item today. It's just zoning in progress. So to give us that time, give you that time to review it, make sure, um, you know, council makes the right decision after a full review is all all the information.
Okay, thank you.
We can complete this in, we can do this in ninety days, uh, and figure something out, you know, through Jeb and through Keith.
Right.
Um, great. You know, that's that should really be a ten.
Right, right. And so so Richard, if we if we get this done in ninety days, can we drop the zoning in progress at that point?
Yep.
So let's do that. So so we have that option. So let's get it done as fast as we can.
Yep.
And uh, get this.
Yeah, we'll find out what we can and can't do and, you know, and go from there.
Good.
Mayor, the res- the the resolution's written not to exceed a hundred and eighty days.
Right. Awesome. Good. All right. Um, and yeah, any public comment on this item?
On this item, Noel Hummelsworth, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand. On this item, you guys were throwing a lot of stuff back and forth. And Steve, I understand what you're saying and I understand the uh, reason for what going to plat. But maybe we can do a composite and merge both of them together. That if someone desires to use the non-plat route, plating will be the standard route. But if someone desires to use the non-plat route, they would come before the council. And the council would grant them the ability to use the non-plat route. And investigate it at that time and give a vote. And then if you vote and say yes, then they can do that. But if they you say no, then they have to go to plat route. And that would have to be looked at by legal to make sure that it's correct. But I think that is a a good composite to say the council can grant using what we use now. But plating will be the standard way that we do it normally. So take a look at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, is there any other public comment? Yeah, Mary Ann, let me take that.
Sure, sure. Mary Ann Allen, one two seven one Mustang Trail. Getting stiff sitting there. It's a long evening, so I'm gonna keep it short. Thank you for taking a breather, because we've had rampant building through all of Southwest Ranches in the last year. And people calling up, are you selling your land? Are you selling your land? And thank you for taking a pause. There's no problem in taking a pause and doing things right, because this is going to affect our future. These subdivisions that are trying to come into our area will destroy the way we look. And you're bringing in too many people that cannot vote us as well. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's way past my bedtime, so. And I work in healthcare, so that's why I'm double masked, that I see what's going on in healthcare. Rose Williams, uh, six zero one one Holliday Trail. Um, I certainly wish, um, Mayor Steve, good evening, council member. He had looked at the waiver COVID hit us last year. And I look out my front ear uh, door. I've been in Southwest Ranches for twenty-six years. I put my house up on the market two years ago. And my son, who knows no other home, had a meltdown, right? How can you sell our house? He knows no other home. That's a little fuzzy, so he doesn't understand. So we took our house off the market, because we, he loves his home. He knows nothing else. But I don't know if he waived the plat requirement, but I look through my front door and I see a little city going up. And I don't know who granted that little city. But I come home every day from working long and hard in the healthcare. Feel my husband and the dust and the tractors and the cars, the trucks go in there. And so I really hope that you will take a look at waiting to see what's going on there. Because before that came, I had a beautiful farm, Allison Bowe, who owned the the property there. Uh, you, a lot of people probably know them. They live diagonally across me at Holliday and Sterling. Uh, they, Bowe was a wet mare who shooed horses. And his wife lived there for forty-five years before she passed away. And unfortunately, they had a special grandson like I do. He was fifty and couldn't manage. So his sister came and took him to Georgia. And boom, and what do I have? I have a little city going up in front of my apartment. So I hope you really consider that and you, these properties, we looked at instead of waiving property uh, plat, you see what they're gonna build on these homes, because we've lost the rural ranches in front of my house and Sterling Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose. All right, seeing no other public comment, David.
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, um, we do need to find a um, solution with the pioneers versus speculators. Yeah, a couple of issues. Uh, I mean, we we have neighbors like Mary Ann Allen, who divided her property. So she can continue to live here. Uh, but I I seriously want to be able to preserve issues that we've already reserved, uh, uh, resolved earlier regarding, um, like the Toll Brothers development over here off of Griffin. And when Griffin and Hancock, when they proposed throwing in one acre uh, lots. I want to make sure that we preserve that our pioneers have their homes and separated families or or a a reasonable type of development as opposed to a speculator coming in and cutting up the property where the the property lines are so close that they just eek by. It's a, that's a big concern, ma'am.
Thank you, David. All right. Any other comments on this item? Seeing none, Russell, I think I please call for a long this.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reckles?
Yes. Um, I'd like to uh, make a recommendation out there. Uh, I think there's a good chance we will not be done by eleven o'clock. I think we've got some important business that I personally would really like to see taken care of this evening.
Can we take a two-minute break?
If if I get the vote, I won't.
I'm not showing the emotion that I can. I'm showing everybody else, but you're not.
It's a plat, huh?
Then twice.
I'll make I'll make a motion to extend the meeting. Add the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any any public discussion on that? None? All right, thank you. If you please put a motion.
Councilmember Albritton?
Only if he gives us a break, yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuzinski? Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reckles?
Yes. All right, let's take a quick a quick break.
Oh, thank you.
I was watching Patton the other day on the George Heaston.
Yeah.
And. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, yeah. Very welcome. All right. Uh, let's see. We are on item seventeen.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, establishing a charter review committee pursuant to section seven point oh three of the town's charter, providing for the appointment of the committee members, providing a committee sunset date, and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, I have a list of your individual appointments if you'd like me to read that in the record as well.
If you agree to that, it's a record, that'd be great.
Sure. Uh, appointment for Jim Albritton is Jim Dyer. For David Kuzinski is Mary Ann Allen. Gary Jablonski is appointing Kathy Sullivan. Bob Hartman is appointing Jason Hallberg. And Steve Reckles is appointing Walt Butler. Thank you, Albritton.
All right.
Good.
Any further comment on that from the council?
No, but I do I do have some suggestions when they start to came. Um, several several of the members that we've appointed have kids that are going away in college. And so we need to be sensitive to that particular time in August when they're, I mean, they're first year students. Yeah, they're first year students. And try and schedule a meeting and, you know, all the pub meetings and all that stuff.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. I think that what we, one of the first things we should do for that group is publish a timeline for them. You know, and we can block out times like that. But just so they know, I mean, we have a very definitive timeframe this has to be accomplished in. So uh, we'd be good to publish that right up front, let them know.
Yeah, I I my my appointee, I gave her a copy of the, a hard copy of the of the charter with no notes on it. Just, you know, read up. And the other day at the rolling notes meeting, um, I was actually there after the photo shoot and I had a few minutes to, you know, just kind of wait till everybody was coming. And I I read the charter in like twenty minutes.
Yes, it's a quick read.
You know, it's it's been much more streamlined than what it was years, you know, decades ago, where it was like, well, you know, wow, as a child.
Right.
Just want to point that out.
Great, thank you. Any public comment on this item?
Mary Ann Allen, Mustang Trail. Thank you, David, for your nomination. Uh, could I request two copies of the comprehensive plan so that I could make notes on one and bring the other copy to make, um, you know, public comments on, et cetera? I don't have a printing machine.
For the charter?
For the charter, yeah. For the charter review committee, I need a, um, and could I also have a copy of all amendments done since the original charter was written in two thousand? Any amendments or changes to it? Could I have that as well?
They would be in the charter.
They would be in the, um, like, I would like the two thousand, the charter that was written in two thousand. We created the town. I'd like to compare it to the charter you have now and go over it and see if any wrongdoing was done in the past that we might be able to rectify. All right, because it is an amendment. And we can see that maybe some of the things that were changed were not really conducive to or, um, you know, along with the comp plan. So if you could do that for me, I really appreciate it. All right, thank you.
We'll turn that over to Andy.
Yeah.
That would be Andy's.
Great, because I because I was gone for a period of about fifteen years and I want to catch up with, what did you guys change when I was away? And what got, you know, like, there's been different, um, leadership. And some of the leadership was rather short and, um, sort of short sight, let's put it that way. And I think this is the most refreshing council that I have seen in a long time. You're really listening to the residents. You're trying, you're really adhering to your campaign promises, which is keep us rural. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Uh, seeing no other public comment, call for a long this item.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kuzinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reckles?
Yes.
All right, item number eighteen.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, requesting the Florida Legislature to adopt a local bill to allow the town to determine if it would like to protect its farm animals by prohibiting the sale and use of fireworks except by permit. Authorizing the submission of a local bill to the Broward delegation in substantially the form, same form as that attached here to as exhibit A, providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this item?
Well, this is gonna require further discussion, because the the item is to determine. And as you, as you all know, I've mentioned in the past, I want to make this a ballot question.
Right.
On the next election. So we have the voter backing with Tallahatch, you know, to go into Tallahatchie, that this is what our residents want. You know, and I I think that gives us strength. And to unfortunately, it it throws it out of here. That's the only.
I guess in talking to Keith, I have a different understanding about this, because I was a little bit worried about this.
Okay.
We're gonna ask for the right to do this in advance and then we'll leave it up to the voters on whether we implement or not.
That's that's what I that's that's what I understood too.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll.
The details are, you know.
Right.
The devil's in the details.
Yep.
Any further comment on this one? Any public comment on this item?
Michelle McBride, East Palomino. Um, it's very refreshing, um, to hear the idea that we're finally gonna do something about the fireworks. And it's a little scary that we are discussing opening up to the public to see what they think. With all due respect, Mr. Jablonski, um, like I I brought up before, and I think it was a homeowners association meeting, that this is a matter of public safety. And in your positions, I don't think that you would consult with the homeowners about changing a speed limit because it's dangerous. This is, this is a public safety. Our job or your your job is, um, you know, to adhere to the charter, which talks about protecting the residents and the quality of lifestyle and the rural lifestyle, which we enjoy here, which is why we keep our horses here. And, um, opening this up to the public, which we have already discussed, how many of them have animals and are concerned and understand the impact that the that the fireworks do to them. This is a questioning area. If it wasn't for, I'm I'm so grateful to our homeowners association and for all the work they did to bring this, um, up, because if it wasn't for the city of Wellington, we wouldn't be discussing it. We would be discussing like we do every July and every January about the tragic deaths and and accidents that occur because fireworks have scared these prey animals. They're prey animals. And we we need to do everything that we can to protect them. And thank you so much for, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, you know, I I I'm waiting to waiting to see what the wording is that we would go out there with for this. Um, I feel like, you know, I I want to do this, go forward with it. Um, I am hesitant from the standpoint that the protection of our animals is who we are. So so I think we have to do this. I think we have to do this. Jim, I loved your idea the last time this came up, where, you know, we picked maybe that, you know, one day, Fourth of July, that, you know, as much as, much as, you know, maybe that's a day where it's allowed, because it is our Independence Day. We're Americans. But overall, this, it has to end, because it's who we are. It's, you know, it's 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 the essence of why we created this town. And I'm concerned, honestly, I would rather, well, I'm concerned, honestly, that the vote may not pass. And, um, and then what do we do? Then then we've got a mandate to not do it. Um, and I'm not comfortable with that. And, um, so I I'm I'm waiting to see what the what the wording is, to see if that's something that I feel comfortable we can get to pass. And if we can, okay. But I'm I'm I. comfortable we can get to pass, and if we can, okay, but I'm, at the end of the day, to me, this has to be done, and, and.
Yeah, just for the record, I'm no fan of fireworks.
I know you're not.
By any stretch of the imagination. I'm looking, the reason I'm proposing it as a ballot question is that people are going to say, well, you took away my right, but we, if it passes the way, I think it's going to pass, then we'll be successful. People, we can, we take away the argument of you took away my right, because now we're going to be having to use police powers and stuff like that, so, you know, as a local ordinance.
Yeah.
So there's another, there's a much, much more, there's a greater impact, if I'm trying to drive, than us just passing an ordinance or a resolution saying fireworks are banned. Now we've got to put some teeth in, and so, you know, it's going to impact a lot more people that say, hey, this is my right to go scare twenty horses, I don't care about you, you know, whatever, and, you know, that's not what we want to do, that's, you're right, a hundred percent right, it's to protect the animal. I think, you know, based on, we're going to work on the language, on the ballot question and all that, but I think we do it constructively, we will succeed.
Yeah, I mean, the good news is, you know, we all agree, I believe, that we've got to do this to protect the animals, and I don't think there's any.
No, there's no argument there whatsoever.
It's just a matter of determining what is the best path to get from where we are today to making that into reality.
That's what the language is key.
That's what the language is key.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, this would only be a, it wouldn't require a five oh vote, right?
No, but I think.
Right, okay, so then, protecting the animals has been, and especially the horses, when I heard that we had a death related to a horse last year, that was devastating.
Yeah.
And, you know, as Noel has told me, that, you know, once we do things to make it harder to keep horses in our town, we're going to become like plantation, and I'm not comfortable with pushing out the horse community, the equestrian community, and that's why I would be willing to stand up and say, yes, I want this to pass.
Right.
Yeah, and that's. No, I think we all do.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that kind of goes without saying.
Right.
Steve?
Yeah?
I said something about the Fourth of July, let me explain. I live in Green Meadows. I've been around, I was able to talk to a bunch of people here because of the charter committee that we just appointed, looking for somebody to sit on that board. I've heard from a lot of residents that do want the fireworks and a lot that don't want the fireworks. I, it's a thing, it's their right, right now, the state says they can do it. I understand the horses, I understand the animals being afraid of them, and I do understand that, but what we're doing here, we're just asking Tallahassee if we can make our own rule, just as though Wellington did, if we can make our own rule. We're not sending anything to Tallahassee saying we can or can't do, we're asking them if we can come up with our own that will supersede what Tallahassee has in place now.
Right.
And I am going to tell everybody, I think that this will be a very, very tight vote, all right? I don't know if it'll pass.
Yeah.
I have spoken to a number of residents, and you see the number of people in the ranches that do this. I think that if we do try to do this, we need to really come up with a compromise that will pass. If it doesn't pass, then these, more people are going to do it. If it doesn't pass, more people are going to say, oh, I can do anything I want now, and they'll be firing off fireworks all year long. If we could come up with some type of a compromise that would say the Fourth of July and the Fourth of July only, or we're going to bust you in the tail, that might work. But if this thing doesn't pass, and I got a strong feeling that it might not pass after we make the rule and put it out to the ballot, then what are we going to do?
Yeah, if I'm not comfortable that it's going to pass, I don't even, I don't want it to go out to the ballot, I'd be honest with you.
Yeah, nobody's saying we have to put this on the ballot.
Right.
This is just a suggestion going right now.
I agree, right, I agree.
And if we can't come up with some kind of language that we think will succeed, I mean, we just throw it in the trash can.
Right.
That's, you know, this is a resolution, this isn't an ordinance.
Right, but we have to really be careful, like I said, because if it fails, if it fails, then you're going to have more people on the ever, saying I can do what I want. So we have to be real careful with that.
Yeah, we can't allow.
Yeah, I'm trying, you know, I, me, the council, we're trying to move the needle, because right now, the needle's on the wrong side.
It's in Tallahassee.
Yeah.
We have no say.
And we have no say, we have no nada, and if we can get the needle moved to protect our property, our animals, you know, you know, that's what his goal is.
Right.
So how we get there?
Yeah, I mean, that's the good news. The good news is we're all committed to making this better. We just have to work through the details to see how.
Yeah, if the details don't work out, and we can't figure this out to, you know, satisfy every, you know, we're never going to satisfy everybody.
No.
But to get to our objectives, you know, we just throw it in the trash can and we'll die. That's kind of my thinking, if we don't.
Well, if, yeah, I mean, I think, I think that we have kicked this around long enough that we've got to do something to protect.
Oh, I'm not saying stop at Tallahassee, I'm saying continue with.
But as far as voting.
As far as voting, yeah, I'm saying, you know, so we're working in two parallel lines.
Right.
That's, that's fine.
This is just for permission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. All right, good. I think we're good.
What worries me is if they say no.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, no.
I mean Tallahassee, not the residents.
Well, and they could, and, I mean, to Gary's point, a vote would definitely be more impactful for getting, you know, their permission, so that's, that's why we, if we do that.
Wait, to vote of the residents?
Yeah, yeah, if the residents say, listen, this is what we want to do.
But then that's not, that's not the way we're approaching this. We are basically going to craft a local bill that's going to go up to Tallahassee for the next legislative session. We'll ask for permission for an exception like Wellington, and then we'll take that if we get it, and we'll craft the language we want for an ordinance, whether it goes to a vote or not, that is going to stop fireworks in our town.
My understanding, and I, it's close to what you're saying, but my understanding is that to the original thought, and clearly, you know, this can all change, my thought of the original thought was that it would go up there in the order that you did, but part of the coercion for the legislature to go our way is that we would be sending it out to our residents.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It'll only go into effect if the resident approved it.
Absolutely.
But, but we've got to come up with a wording ahead of time, because if we're not comfortable with the wording, I don't want that in the local term to Tallahassee at all, because I don't want it to go out to the rest.
Well, you want to change the local bill, is what you want to do.
Yeah. This takes a lot more thought.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, is eleven oh five a good time to try to resolve?
No, it's not, but we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
Moving in the right direction, all right. Russell, if you can please call the item.
I'll admit creativity woes after about ten thirty.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Steve Bright Cruz?
Yes.
That's the fastest role you've taken.
Hey, guys, it's happy hour.
Somewhere.
California. All right, item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with RG Underground Engineering, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents to complete the Southwest Fiftieth Street and Southwest One Eighty-Second Terrace Drainage Improvements, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Do we have a motion on this item?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion on this item?
No. Yeah, I did have one, and just a question, really. I couldn't really see online the graphic very well, and actually, I think they printed out a copy. Gary, this ends on Mather?
I'm sorry.
This runs from, this runs to Mather, makes the dog leg to the canal that's right behind that first house there?
Yeah, Rod, this is coming, as you come in to Rolling Oaks, this is on the west side.
No, I get that, but it starts down the road.
Oh, this is, this is on the extreme end, extreme, extreme west end.
West end, and then, but it ties into that canal that's behind the first house. That's what I couldn't see online.
Yeah, does it go all the way to, thank you, getting everybody, it ties into a canal that goes obviously north and south, but it doesn't go all the way to Mather, so it's about, I guess, halfway to three quarters down.
Okay, so it ties in behind the houses there?
Yeah, there's a canal that splits two lots, it's, I would say, two thirds from the west extreme to the east.
That's it right there, okay.
Yeah, this is the canal that pops out where Aster used to live.
Right.
Right there, and then goes, then flows to One Seventy-Second Street, and then out to the S.A. Hump.
Yeah, for some reason, and when I was looking at it on the computer, Adobe Acrobat wouldn't, loaded up in pixel, it blew it up in pixel, so, yeah, I couldn't tell. Thank you, Rod.
All right, any further discussion on this item? Any public comment on this item? We're running out of public.
Public is gone.
Yeah. Rose, do you have any, Rose, do you have any comment on this item?
You've got a lot of influence right now, you've got all of our ears. Here comes Noel, he's still here.
There, Noel is here. All right, Russell, if you please call the item.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Steve Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Item number twenty.
Item number twenty is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with Broward County to receive seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, five, five dollars and zero cents of surtax funding to complete the transportation surface drainage and ongoing rehabilitation of Southwest One Ninety-Sixth Lane, Southwest One Ninety-Ninth Avenue, Southwest Two Oh First Street, Southwest Forty-Ninth Court, Southwest Fiftieth Place, and Southwest, Southwest Fiftieth Manor, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
No, you need a second.
Second. Oh, I didn't know, all right, all right.
I got to yell louder.
Quick.
All right, any, any discussion on this item?
No. Matter from heaven.
Yep, yeah, and that was, I just want to make one quick comment, once again, I said it earlier again, thank you, Rod, thank you, Emily.
Yeah.
This is, this is a ton of money to improve our town, and appreciate the work to get that funding for it. It's nineteen, twenty, and also twenty-one, all those. All right, Noel, Rose, any comment on this item?
Noel Hollisworth, One Ninety-Ninth Avenue, I've got one question on One Ninety-Ninth Avenue. Has the surveys been done already on One Ninety-Ninth? Did it show up that the water drains towards Griffin Road from the canal all the way to my house? The surveys show that, and what is the drainage going to do about that? So the water drains to the canal from the road, because you see, One Ninety-Ninth from Griffin flows down to my house, and then from where the hump is now, the first hump, just beyond that, it flows north to my house. It has all along. And if you'd look at the notes of the drainage board from two thousand and four, two thousand and five, when they were looking at drainage and had a citizens committee on that, you'll see the notes saying that, yes, it does, and photographs in those notes somewhere in the files of the town hall gathering dust. You will find all of that documentation, where, so, I'd like to know, maybe Rod can come up and mention it now, what are they going to do about it? Because if they put the swale in, all it did, when they, my next door neighbor to the south, just facilitated the drainage even better into my yard. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further public comments.
Just a quick comment about this, I'm not sure if everybody realizes, but for us to spend seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars would have taken us two years of Tisdor funding.
Yeah.
This is really accelerating the work that needs to be done, so.
It really is.
We keep saying thank you, but keep up the great work.
Yeah. All right, Russell, if you can please call the item.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Steve Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number twenty-one.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with Broward County to receive one million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and zero cents of surtax funding to complete the transportation surface drainage and ongoing rehabilitation of Southwest One Twenty-Eighth Avenue, Southwest One Thirty-Fifth Avenue, Malaluka Road, Southwest One Thirty-Third Avenue, Southwest One Thirty-Fifth Avenue, Luke Bow Lane, and Southwest One Thirty-Sixth Avenue, Holte Trail, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This would have taken three years to fund.
Yeah.
Not more than that.
All right, any council comment?
No. Okay, I'd just like to know when it's going to start, and Rose Williams, six-year-old one on Holte Trail, and like the gentleman rightfully say, when they did that road, God knows how long ago, they tilted that road to my house, it didn't go to the canal, and David knows, when you come, when there's a heavy rain, I can put a boat in front of my gate, okay? So I hope this time, when they do the road, we've been a long way in it. If you, if, I don't know if anyone besides David has gone from Sterling and Holte to even Lorre, they've got potholes this big. I'm a runner, I don't run there anymore. I go to the good side, I go to my north, okay? And it's really sad to think that we paid that much taxes in the ranches, because we love it, we love the acreage, and we have such terrible, terrible roads. So I'm, kudos to these two young people for getting this money. I think it's well overdue, and I don't know when it's going to start, but I hope soon, and I hope when they do it this time, that water doesn't come anymore. If that point, it's not even going to be worth it. I hope they figure out a way how to bring that water to the canal, to my north or to my east, because there's, I've been here before with a water problem, and I've been told, put a fresh drain in, put a this, that in, but that was not so when I built my house, twenty-six plus years ago. Once they did that road, that water just backed up to my gate, and you can't even get past that gate. So I thank you for getting this money, I thank you for getting this money. I wait patiently to see how it's going to be done. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rose. Rod, can I kind of pose on you to talk a little bit about the schedule for this, and also, I know in some places, I'm not sure if it's true in Rose's case or not, but sometimes it's, the road is actually put in intentionally to not go towards the canal.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
So maybe you can talk about those two things, if you could, please.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor, to talk about the schedule, so, right now, we're basically going in front of you guys, we want to make sure that we approve these agreements, so we have essentially a year to get these projects completed, so we're obviously very motivated to get them completed and accelerated. The drainage project we had before, that one's to actually award the contract to actually start the construction. So when you have, when you have canals on one side of the road, a lot of times, if you have pitch towards the canal, through time, with different rainfall and different runoff, you have erosion problems, because water always will find the lowest place, and it will keep on going to that same place. So what they do is, is they end up pitching it away from the canal, because what they want to do is put structures on the other side, put piping to connect underground, that way it takes care of the erosion problem, and you have the connection to go to both sides. In Mrs., in Rose's case, I actually know her property very well, she's got an issue where it's, she doesn't really have swales in the front yard, and obviously, it's part of Tisdor, part of what we like to do is create swales so we can balance that hydraulic grade line and have water, you know, so it's got somewhere to go, and she's actually next door canal there on Sterling, so she's actually going to benefit really well from the, from the project improvement. In Noel's case, again, I don't know, I don't have the survey memorized, I'd have to look at the grades just to see, but we're going to try to do the same thing, basically, we're trying to lower grade lines so water can flow as effectively as possible.
Awesome. Great, thank you, Rose. Any other comments, questions on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Emily, Rod, thank you very much.
side, he approached me last year, or actually, a few months ago, David, how much longer is this going to be on Holatay? These neighbors have approached me time and time again, how long is this going to be? And I'm very happy that this has come to fruition tonight, and with this vote, that this deal will be done.
Great, Eric, thank you. All right, seeing no other comments, Russell, if you could please call the roll.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number twenty-two.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order to all power generator corp. in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to replace the radiator for the Generac SD three hundred generator at Town Hall, excuse me, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Any council member comment on this item? Seeing none. Any public comment on this item, Noel? Seeing none. All right, Russell, if you could please call the item.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number twenty-three is the approval of minutes.
Yes, Mayor, if I may just say, we passed out an amended set of minutes prior to the meeting, and if there's going to be a motion to approve, I would ask that it include the amended set of minutes.
Great.
Motion to approve and include the amended set of minutes.
Second.
All right, any, any comment on that? Any public comment on that? Seeing none, Russell, if you can please call the item.
Certainly, Mayor, Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Kaczynski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Breckus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, item number twenty-two.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing a purchase order to all power generator corp. in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars to replace the radiator for the Generac SD three hundred generator at Town Hall, excuse me, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Any council member comment on this item? Seeing none. Any public comment on this item, Noel? Seeing none.[1745.82]